To council chambers.
Good morning. If I can have everyone's attention. This is going to be a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, June 29th. And while we are waiting a few more members for an official quorum, we are going to begin the presentation part of the meeting. And I would like at this time to recognize both Council President Alex Padilla and School Board President Jose Wezar.
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. In front of you, you'll notice that we all have an apple for the teacher, just to set the tone for today. It gives me great pleasure to make an introduction today of some thirty of the most gifted, talented, committed, experienced people who have chosen to take on a challenge. As you all recall, about two months ago, this city council voted unanimously to create the first ever joint city-school district commission to reevaluate the governance of Los Angeles Unified School District. It had become clear to us that the time to act was now for the city, the school board, and other cities served by LAUSD to come together to seek ways to improve the effectiveness, the efficiency, the equity of our school district, and most importantly, how we serve our students and their families. Our city clerk is also designating somebody to support this commission. Our chief legislative analyst has designated Joan Garrioso to help staff this commission. And colleagues, as you know, in adopting our city budget, we committed to begin with half a million dollars to support this commission. We have created the commission, we have provided resources, and we're looking forward to the incredible opportunity that lay before us. Nothing is more important for the future of our city than the education of our kids. For the business leaders who are listening out there, let us remind you, the workforce of tomorrow is in our classrooms today. And so today it gives me great pleasure to share these comments with you, to ask School Board President Jose Wezar to share some remarks, and then we'll introduce the commissioners and ask them to take their oath.
Thank you, Council President Padilla. This gathering today reminds us about how important education is to the future well-being of the city and the other cities that the school district covers. And I want to start off by mentioning that we all know that LAUSD can be a high-performing school district, that it doesn't matter what the economic or racial background of our students are, all students could achieve to their natural potential if they are given
For me, going through this process, we've recognized that it's not only a matter of governance, but we often talk about, everywhere we go, about how the city can work better with the school district. And here we have a commission that would not only focus on governance, but it will focus on such issues that are important to our communities, such as safety, after-school programs, and how we're citing our schools, a program where we're citing and building more than 160 new schools in the next eight years. So I congratulate all the commissioners. I thank them for volunteering their time. I thank them for their civic responsibility. We know that you are here today because you care about the future of the city, you care about its most precious resource, its children, and thank you very much for your willingness to serve. At this time, I'd like to introduce the appointments by the school district board members. And if I could ask you to please stand, and afterwards, I think they're all going to come forward. Should we ask them to come forward right now? Okay. As I call your name, if you could come forward. And our first is Bill Clay. He is the appointee of School Board Member Marguerite Lamont. And Mr. Clay is retired. Do I read the whole summary here, or just their title where they work? Okay. Mr. Clay is the general manager for AT&amp;T. Thank you, Mr. Clay. Maria Casillas is my appointee to the commission and will serve as co-chair. She is the president of Families in Schools, an organization dedicated to getting parents more involved in their local schools and their children's education. Ed Burke is the chief of staff to John Larson and is the appointee of School Board Member John Larson. Dr. Carl Cohen, he is the appointee of Marlene Cantor. He is a professor at USC, former superintendent of Long Beach Unified School District, and the independent monitor for the Chanda Smith Decree at LAUSD. I'd like to, at this time, also acknowledge the presence of School Board Member Marlene Cantor, who is here, vice president. Thank you for being here. Andrew Westall, adjunct professor at Pasadena City College. He is the appointee of School Board Member David Tokowski. Colleen Schwab, a teacher at LA Unified School District. She is the appointee of Julie Kornstein. And Cecilia Moreno, she is the appointee of Mike Lancing. I don't believe she is here. She is the community relations director at Shaw Oil Company. The Board of Education also had two at-large appointees. The at-large appointees are Ron Prescott, deputy superintendent, retired for the Los Angeles Unified School District, and Scott Plotkin, executive director for the California School Boards Association. I don't believe Scott Plotkin is here today. And these are the appointees of the members of the Board of Education.
And they will be joined in serving with the following appointments. The first two by the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. Mayor Hahn has appointed Dr. Yvonne Chan, principal of the Yvonne Next Century Learning Center and a professor at UCLA, as well as Carla Sanger, whom we all know as the president and CEO of LA's best. She's getting ready for a big night tomorrow night. The mayors of the southeast cities have designated Ofelia Hernandez, the mayor of Huntington Park, and Maria Davila, honorable vice mayor of the city of Southgate, as their two representatives. They can come forward. Mayors of Gardena, Carson, and Lomita have chosen Mayor Don Deere of the city of Gardena to serve as their representative, and also want to acknowledge his brother in attendance and support, Jim Deere, mayor of Carson. We want to welcome you as well. Mayors of Monterey Park, West Hollywood, and San Fernando have selected the mayor of San Fernando, Julie Ruelas, to serve as their representative. Mayor Ruelas is a professor of child development in Los Angeles Mission College. And as you all know, each of the members of the Los Angeles City Council had one appointment as well. Representing, appointed by Councilmember Ed Reyes is Ramon Muniz, program coordinator of all educational opportunity partnership programs at Cal State Northridge. Thank you for serving. Councilmember Wendy Gruel appointed Dr. Tyree Weider, president of Los Angeles Valley Councilmember Dennis Zine has appointed Mr. Paul White, co-founder and lead teacher of the West Valley Leadership Academy operated by the LA County Office of Education. Councilmember Labange has appointed Mary Rodriguez, a parent, volunteer, and community Councilmember Jack Weiss has appointed Warner Brothers Executive, Mr. Howard Walensky, who also is the commissioner on the California Post-Secondary Education Commission. Councilmember Tony Cárdenas has appointed his chief of staff, Jose Cornejo, to serve on this commission. And I should add that Mr. Cornejo has not only policy experience here in the city of Los Angeles, but years of it in state government, which is going to be critical for the commission. My appointee will also serve as one of the two co-chairs, name familiar to all of us, David Cunningham III, not only a successful attorney here in Los Angeles, but current president of the Police Commission to underscore the relationship between the city and the school district when it comes to public safety. Councilmember Parks has appointed Dr. Robert Barner, Assistant Superintendent of Education Programs with the LA County Office of Education. Councilmember Perry has appointed Jonathan Williams, founder and co-director of the Accelerated School, a model charter school in South Los Angeles. Councilmember Ludlow has appointed Aaron Pak, CEO of the Korean Health Education and Information Research Center. Let's make room, folks. Councilmember Misakowski has appointed Robin Kramer, another person well-known to the halls of this building and throughout the city, and has recently accepted the position as chief of staff to our incoming mayor. Councilmember Smith has appointed Jerry Horowitz, a lifetime educator and principal of Richard Byrd Middle School in Sun Valley. Councilmember Garcetti has appointed Marquise Harris Dawson, executive director of the Community Coalition. Councilmember, mayor-elect, Viaragosa, has appointed Mary Rose Ortega, longtime LAUSD teacher. I think she said 29 years, and a respected community activist. And finally, Councilmember Hahn has appointed Camilla Townsend, who has worked with LAUSD for 38 years as a teacher and administrator and a former principal of the Harbor Community Adult School. Let's give them all a round of applause. And now, Mr. Clerk, will you please administer the oath to our commissioners?
Do you swear? Are you solemnly swearing?
I solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States?
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Charter of the City of Los Angeles?
And the Charter of the City of Los Angeles.
That I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge.
Duties of?
Duties of.
Member of the President's Joint Commission on LAUSD Governance?
The President's Joint Commission on LAUSD Governance.
With the best of my ability.
With the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
On a closing note, colleagues and everybody who is watching, I think we can stand proud to see the caliber of the commissioners that have been selected, the diversity of the commissioners that have been selected, and to rest assured that all stakeholders of concern are represented. In this panel, we have teachers, we have principals, we have parents, we have people that have been within the school district, who have been outside the school district, people who know government in its various capacities as well. Ladies and gentlemen, we look forward to your work, we look forward to your recommendations, and we stand here to support you every step of the way.
Thank you, Mr. President.
If I can ask our two co-chairs maybe to say?
We also have a councilmember, Gruel, who pushed her button to speak. I don't know if you wanted to congratulate them.
I will just be brief, and I wanted to congratulate all of the commissioners. You have a big task ahead of you, but I have one of my previous assistant principals here, when I was at Frost Junior High, and have a wonderful representative in Tyree and many of the others I have met, and I think this is an exciting day. And just primarily, I wanted to congratulate as well Alex Padilla and Jose Weisar for your leadership on this. There are a lot of people depending upon the success of your effort, and know that each and every one of us around this horseshoe will be here to support you and to challenge you, because there is nothing more important than the education of our children. So congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to congratulate all of you, the diverse backgrounds, the problems, there's no question, I think we'll all agree, we've got a daunting task, a challenging task with education within this region, and we'll look upon you to come up with the solutions. And I know it's going to take a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of effort, and from your distinguished careers that we have, I know that my representative from the West San Fernando Valley and all the representatives from the particular regions, this is a region problem, obviously, not a localized region in one particular area, but a universal problem that we need to do. And if we can't get them into Valley College, they're not going to find a occupation, if we can't get them out of high school. So I challenge you all to do the great work. I know it's going to be frustrating at times. As a former charter commissioner, we had no budget, we had no facilities. You're starting out the same way, but working together with the Board of Education, I'm sure we will make it happen. And I don't know if Marlene Cantor was introduced. I know, she was introduced? Okay. I see her hiding there. And I also want to acknowledge the fact that we have two members of the school board here, and I was there to testify just last week. So I appreciate the relationship that we built, and I wish you all well in this wonderful endeavor to help education within this region. Thank you all very much.
Councilmember Labange.
Thank you, President Weisar, President Padilla, and all of you, because it's such an important task. Because 34 years ago, I graduated from John Marshall High School, and I ran into my counselor, Clayton Finstead, and I asked Clayton, how many dropped out of our class of 735? There's roughly about 24, 25, and half of them went, you know, into the service or things of this nature here. The brightest story of the week was the story in the paper about Poly High School this week, where 89% of the ninth graders are going to 10th grade. And I understand that the ninth to 10th jump is a very big jump, a gigantic jump, which causes a lot to fall. So important to come back with, whether we change the governance or whatever the case may be, but that we find a way to help those young people who are going to be sitting here and there and throughout in all our lives and improve it. So we had what I got in Los Angeles from schools. And I'm glad that Mary Rodriguez, a parent who's been involved in turning schools around in a neighborhood, is here along with so many of you. You're all all-stars, but I love Yvonne Chan because she's a super all-star, but that's a personal thing. But all of you work well. And the other thing too, which is a reality, Alex and Jose, is we talk about joint use, we talk about partnership, but there needs to be better partnership. Because I know from a park, as a park advocate, I'd want to build another 75 parks in the school tomorrow if I could turn over those middle schools to after-school and weekend programs. But there's giant challenges there. And I think that after-school program, and I see our all-star right there, standing there, I know, Carla, the work the after-school program means to young people. It's a place where they get touched by somebody, and that's so important. And lastly, radically move the school start time a little later. Traffic is a giant problem, but if we started at 8:00, maybe kids in my district don't have to get up at 5:30 in the morning, get a bus at Cowenga School to go to empty seats in the valley. And maybe school starts a little later in the day, and they could get nutrition in the morning and get going. Because I know some schools will start at 7:21 and otherwise, and all those challenges. Those are just the little things. Thank you for what you do, and I'm sure you will, but remember your days in the classroom. Remember who pushed you to be able to stand where you stand today, and try to transcend that back to this great Los Angeles school district that served so well for many years that needs a clean look of how we could do a better job. I want to thank the Board of Education too especially for that. Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. When I learned through the Harvard study that 65% of Latinos are dropping out before they finish high school is a startling statistic. When I speak to the Southern California Association of Governments, and they indicate that Los Angeles is now following the trends of Detroit in the 70s, where the inner cities, their dropout rates, their unemployment, violent crime, is reaching parallels where this city is now imploding internally, not only this city but the region. Now, if we don't change this, we will be suffering the same type of social ills that the rust belt felt when those manufacturing businesses left. So the question becomes, where are the future jobs? In my mind, we should be challenging the state and the city and ask the question, why aren't we using the school bond funds, school resources, along with the cities, to build housing for teachers? Our teachers cannot afford to live in Los Angeles. Our students, their families, cannot afford to live in Los Angeles. So where will they study? As Tom has alluded, where will they play? These are big issues. They are very real. As chair of Planning, Land Use, and Management, I would love to see from this body language that speaks to how we can use our police powers and entitlements to create places of learning, where, why, of why not looking at housing in and around the schools, parks on top of parking structures, thinking vertically. We need to break that proverbial box. We have no choice. If we're going to stop these trends, it's up to us today. So I want to thank you for stepping up. There's an array of folks here with many talents, but let's not forget how we can push the bureaucracy, how we can cajole the unions, how we can look at the administrators, how we can rally the teachers, inspire the teachers, and how we can show our children that we truly do care. We do love them, we do want them to be healthy. Get rid of the junk food in the schools. There are many things that are happening now that we could change. And I want to thank you for stepping up. It's not an easy task. You will be under magnifying glass. We will ask, what did this mean? Was it just a headline in the press? Was it something for politicians to use during term limits to get credit so they can move on to other positions? Or did we really focus on the kids? I hope we can say in the end of this process that this is how we change the city, the state, the county, because our children matter. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. I know we have much to do, so I will try to keep my comments as brief as possible. And I just want to congratulate everybody. This is an extraordinary roster of talent from the political realm, from the community realm, from the parent realm, from the teacher realm, from the administrative realm, from the community realm, and I think it reflects this entire region and this entire city. So I would just especially give my thanks to Marquise for serving. I appreciate you doing that in a very busy life that you all lead. But be brave, be bold, be unafraid. There's a great quote in a report that Mr. Smith submitted yesterday on changing the way that we look at trash collection in this city. It was from Machiavelli, and it said, "The folks who have an interest in the old way are passionate about the old way, and there's always only lukewarm support for the new way. But it is your duty to make sure that we get support behind the new way of doing things, because the old way does need to change." And you all can be those visionaries in imbuing what education means in this area in a brand-new way and in a bright forward tomorrow. So I thank you for that service. We remain your partners here around this horseshoe. Reach out to us, include us. We'll continue to bring the community that we represent, not just through each one of you, but through our daily interactions. And let's get this job done and prove that we can do it a new way here in Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I rise to congratulate every single one of you and to thank you for being willing to serve in this capacity. In 1997, Dennis Zine and myself were elected to another reform commission, the Charter Reform Commission. We took a 75-year-old city charter, which was the constitution of Los Angeles government, and we attempted to reform it. We spent two years, we had meetings all over the city of Los Angeles. The city council had an appointed charter commission that worked alongside of us, and at the end, we did what we thought was best for the voters of Los Angeles. We combined our commissions, we combined our recommendations, and we presented to the voters of Los Angeles a unified document with recommendations for sweeping changes in how the city of Los Angeles does business. The voters overwhelmingly approved what we did because of the process that we undertook. I hope that you will agree to have your meetings, not in one meetings, not in one place, but you will take your meetings all over the school district boundaries, into Gardena, into Carson, into Lomita, into areas where people don't generally have an opportunity to weigh in on the decisions that the school district makes that impact their children's lives. And I would encourage you to have an open mic at your meeting so that the public could come and tell you stories, tell you frustrations, tell you things that they think would improve the school district governance. I think you will find those to be the most rewarding hours when you hear from the people who are most impacted by our decisions. So congratulations. You will have everyone watching you. You will have everyone giving you an opinion. But I hope you start this process with an open mind, and that you don't already have an end game in mind, but that you will be open to thinking outside of the box, and you will be open to truly reforming the governance of the LA Unified School District so that this legacy will translate to an educated group of young people who will go on to change the world. So you have a great challenge. You have a great burden that you will be carrying on, and I congratulate you. My appointee to this commission, Camila Townsend, is not here this morning. She's in Mexico, I believe. But she is a woman who has a long career in education. She is one of the founding members of a new charter high school in downtown San Pedro, which will, for the first time, take the port of Los Angeles and build a curriculum around maritime opportunities, port planning, ship designing. Too many times, kids, particularly in Wilmington and San Pedro, grow up next to the port of Los Angeles, but sometimes what they're learning in school does not connect them with the enormous possibilities of the international trade industry. So those are the kind of things that I think are exciting. Congratulations. We are really going to push for you, pull for you, and encourage you every step of the way.
Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, to the commission. So pleased to see the level of quality and background represented here today. And I wanted to just highlight two individuals here. Our friend here, Dr. Barner, who, when I first met him, was one of the most intimidating authority figures in an academic aesthetic that I had met in a long time, but someone who has a great love for the development of young people and a tremendous history of transforming people's lives. And then Jonathan Williams, and I had my swearing in the other day at the Accelerated School because I wanted the people in attendance to see the tremendous community that they have built, the tremendous learning community now K through 12, and what it has done for children's lives. But what's best about the Accelerated School and Jonathan and Kevin's experience and outlook is that they are willing to share with great zeal and great passion the depth and breadth of their experiences as they have developed this school, and I hope that you will partake of that. And one last thing, I've spent a lot of time talking to the young students at Jefferson High School, and I was in a classroom asking them, "The media keeps telling us this is all about race. What is this about?" And they just laughed. They thought that was ridiculous. What they said is that we're bored. They want something to do. They want summer internships. They want activities on campus. They want their electives restored. And they said that's what they want. And I hope that, as commissioners, you take the time to have the students from all tracks come in and talk to you about what they want and how they feel. And I think you'll get a better sense of reality and craft approaches that will actually work. So, thanks.
Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that the two presidents, great job. You stayed on course, and really appreciate the opportunity to come out to the initial press conference, which I think was at your home school, where you graduated from grade school, President Weisar. But I think it shows that there's a seriousness about this. It did not take forever. And when you look at this assemblage, you can't help but be impressed. For me, it's like old homewake with Ron and Mark Keith and Dr. Barner and a few people that we've grown up in this city together. Dr. Barner, when I was in the Police Department, did a wonderful job at Manual Arts High School, also has a unique background in the 8th District, is a resident there, but has a unique background in both the LA Unified School District and now the County Board of Education. So he brings that expertise. But like all of you, his love for children is absolutely the base of why he does what he does. The one thing that I will just say to you, that if you are wondering why you are here, it should be capsulized in just one figure that I use all the time, and that is, as a police officer for 38 years, we found the end result of all the failures of the social system. And to give you that indication is that every morning that we wake up in the city of LA, that in the state of California, there's 160,000 people in state prison. 60% of them are illiterate. So it tells us if we don't put money in the front end, we will then continue to grow our criminal justice system so that we can catch them on the back end. So I'd hope that we look at this as the greatest investment and prevention and intervention that we can find so that one day we'll wake up in closed state prisons as opposed to keep building them at the rate we're building them. So thank you for serving.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Padilla.
Yes, good morning. I don't know if you're Madam Chairman or what it is, because I am not a politician, and I just want to assure you I'm not running for office. So in a year, we hope to be here with this group of people that are really dedicated public servants. In addition to what you see before you, the great capacity, the great experience, and the great dedication that they have already demonstrated in their own lives, we share the great vision for the metropolitan area of Los Angeles. We know education is everybody's business. And today, we are here in a very historic moment because you have recognized as the leaders of the city of Los Angeles and the leadership from the school district that schools cannot improve on their own. If left alone, they will manage to swim through the murky waters and do the best that they can, but that they need our support. We want to build on the progress that has been made in Los Angeles Unified School District, but we are very cognizant of the fact that this structure of governance was created at best for the mid-20th century, and we are now quickly into the 21st century. We hope that you will support our need for resources, perhaps for staff or whatever it is that we need, so that we can conduct our business in a public way and in a very, very productive way. Thank you, and I hope to see you between now and the coming year. Thank you.
So much has been said. I'll be brief. It's all about the children. It's all about the children. We are people here to make a difference. And by enhancing the school system, we are enriching the lives of our children. We are enriching the life of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. And we will be back to you with a number of meaningful recommendations that will make our school system better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Commissioner President Jose Weisar, and to all of you. You received your charge. Thank you for joining us this morning. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohan Labange, Lelo Missakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa Weiss, Zine Padilla, 12 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
All right. The council is in session. Let's start going through the order. Could I ask for a little bit of quiet in the audience as we run through the agenda?
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves. Mr. Labange seconds. The minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves. Ms. Perry seconds. Those are also approved.
Madam President, on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing. Items 1 through 3 are street lighting ordinances. There is a recommendation from the Bureau of Street Lighting, however, on recommendation number one, that that needs to be amended to delete recommendations 2 and 3, and instruct the Bureau of Street Lighting to prepare an abandoning ordinance.
All right. We have no cards submitted on 1, 2, and 3, so the street lighting ordinances will be before us, with the exception of item 1, where we will adopt the recommendation of the Bureau and send it back for redrafting. Any specials, members, items 1 through 3? If not, those are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 4 through 32. Item number 4 is a committee report recommending approval of confirmation to a commission. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's hold that on the desk.
Then that would be before council. Items 5 through 32.
All right. Ms. Perry, did you have a special? I'm sorry, which one?
6.
Item 6 has been called special by Ms. Perry. The other items, members, items 5 through 32 are now before us. Hearings have been held, so take a motion from the floor to reopen the hearings. Any specials? Ms. Hahn.
Yes, I'd like to continue item 16 for Councilwoman Labange for 30 days.
All right.
And I'd like to continue item 19 until Tuesday.
All right. There's a request to continue items 16 and 19. Any objections? I believe Mr. Cardenas had also asked we continue item 18 till Tuesday. So that will also be continued. I'm sorry, item 18 is going to be continued till Wednesday, all right, per Mr. Cardenas' request. Any others, any specials? Now, items 5 through 32.
And excuse me, Madam President, just to let council know, on item number 30, there is a community impact statement that has been submitted. It was from the Chatsworth Neighborhood Council, and they are opposed to the project.
All right. We do have that report that is listed on the file. Any other specials? If not, we do-
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Reyes.
Need some amendments on 28A, 31A, we're introducing.
So 28, or was that 20 or 28?
I'm sorry, 28-
28.
Is one item, and 31 is the other. We'll be putting on the floor the amendments, 28A and 31A.
All right. I don't think those have been distributed yet, so we will call them special so the motion, amending motions can be submitted.
Thank you.
So the remaining items are now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 33 through 58, 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right. We do have cards, so on 33, we'll call that special. Item 47, item 52, 55, and 56. So all of those will be special. Any other specials? Mr. Garcetti.
If on item 41, we can add CDs 10 and 13 to the CD 14, just that change, and then we'll-
That was on item 41, an amendment to include others to other council districts. All right. There will be no objection to that amendment. Any other specials? If not, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved.
Next items are on this continued agenda, item number 59, and that is, has two reports, and a motion is required on that.
All right. We are on item 59. Does someone want to make a motion on that? Mr. Smith?
We will sign and circulate it, which will effectuate what we agreed on yesterday and that is an extension to July 22.
All right. If, Ms., I think you can make the verbal motion based on our actions yesterday. There has been an agreement, and we can formally continue item 59 until July-
22.
22. So that will be the order. Did we want to have it on council on July 22 or have it on council before that?
The extension is till July 22. It is fully our intention and belief it will be handled before that date, but that is the last date to act.
All right. Well, we have the, we will record, add to the file, then the letter allowing us to have an extension until July 22, and the President will work with the clerk to schedule it prior to that time.
Thank you, Madam President.
That will be the order. Next items, Madam Clerk? Yeah, I think there was no objection, so we'll just go ahead and act on that.
Madam President, there is a special meeting that has been agendized for 11 o'clock. Do you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
Yes, let's do that. Special meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today after 11 o'clock. Call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohan Labange, Lelo Missakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa Weiss, Zine Padilla, 12 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
All right. We are on the special agenda, members, special council meeting agenda.
Item 1 on the regular, excuse me, on the special meeting is an item for which public hearing has been held. Budget and Finance Committee report has been submitted, and I believe there's a request to continue that matter to July 13.
All right. Is there any objection to continue to July 13, item number 1? Seeing none, that will be the order.
The next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 2 through 5, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Items 2 through 5 are now before us. Mr. Garcetti, you want to call 3 special. Ms. Zine wants to call 3 special as well.
We're special.
Mr. Parks? Oh, item 5 is called special by Mr. Padilla.
Yeah, we have amending motions for both 3 and 5.
Okay, since 3 and 5 are now called special, we'll consider those amending motions. So that leaves items 2 and 4 before us. We did have a card submitted on item 4, so we will call that special for a card. All right, item 2 is before us. Seeing, why don't we open the roll on item 2? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. That will be the order. Why don't we take item 4, which was called special for a card, and Mr., let me recognize Mr. Garcetti for an introduction.
Thank you very much, Madam President. It gives me great joy to be able to welcome here a special delegation that is here from Russia. The Hollywood Rotary, Venice Marina, and Wilshire Rotary Clubs are hosting an open world program designed to strengthen international relations by hosting and coordinating a local program for Russian delegates. These Russian delegates are here being hosted in American homes, one of a total of 1,700 current and future political and civic leaders from Russia. It's a great honor to have them here. Irina Viktorovna Kareva, Maria Vladimirovna Kargalutskaya, Victoria Evgenievna, I knew this was going to happen, Olifertuk, Valentina Anatolyevna Shiraeva, Anna Ferrovna Kirlova. I hope you will join me in welcoming them to City Hall. Give them a round of applause. And we look forward to strengthening the ties of friendship between Russia and Los Angeles. Thank you. It's an honor to have you here today.
Thank you. And Mr. Labange.
Just want to thank you. If you could, please keep standing right there. The beautiful thing about the world is there's people who look, there's a fellow named Ferris Weeby in Los Angeles who looks just like that gentleman who's with you in that delegation. Thank you all so much for coming down. Parav.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. All right. We are now on item 4 on the special agenda, and we did have a card submitted. Let me call forward at this time. We need, we have to have the speaker area cleared. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins on item number 4. Is Ms. Hawkins present?
Yes. What about item number 33?
We're doing this one first. Speak on item 4 on the special agenda.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. On item number 4, we must say no. We must say no and say yes to a new area that is dealing with LAX Airport because there is too many owners, franchises, subcontractors, and is not organized to lead this LAX Airport in a stable condition. Tambaty Airport must be demolished also because it is connected to the old airport under to travel passengers that have been hostage since September 11 to 001 Tuesday. Back to Beverly Hills or Oceanview area, buy hertz, rent a car, or rent a driver. We can't see it happening because of tenant windows. Hawkwall 5 must be a seeing war and not a hitting war. We must also be aware of new change-up from tenant windows to clear tenant windows. That you can, or you can't tell only if their window is let down only in the back a little bit. Now you are able to-
Ms. Hawkins, can you please conclude?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That closes the public hearing, and we now have item 4 before us. Open the roll. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, and we are going to send everything today, members, on both the special agenda and the regular agenda forthwith, so we will note that. Next item.
Madam President, do you wish to continue with the items that were called special in the, in the special meeting, or do you wish to have those taken up?
Let's go ahead, though, that would be items-
Three and five.
All right, and Mr. Garcetti?
Called item number three special.
Oh, Mr. Garcetti's in the back. Ms. De, are you ready on item five? Want three as well?
Yes, and I, my staff discussed this with Councilwoman Garcetti, I think we're all in agreement that I have a verbal motion on this to refer the personnel matters to the CA, in the C O report. Recommendations two, four, I'm sorry, get back to your seat, Eric, hurry up. Recommendations three, four, and five, back to the Personnel Committee and approve all of the recommendations from the Chair, a member of the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee. That would be the verbal motion on that matter. So, three, four, and five, the Personnel Committee, and the rest of it approved.
And those were in the C O recommendations, three, four, and five, correct?
Yes.
All right, then, there is a motion to approve this with the recommendation of items three, four, and five, recommendation going back to Council on Community and Economic Development Committee. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam President. I am in concurrence with those amendments. I believe there's a technical amendment that needs to be circulated on CEQA findings that were adopted in the council, and I believe Mr. Parks has a couple of motions that we're waiting to circulate, so we may want to hold the rest of, has that been circulated yet, Mr. Parks, do we know? Okay, we're still waiting, so we should probably hold that on desk just to make sure everybody gets that and the CEQA findings one on item three. We're on three?
No, but the, I have a special motion, five, for Mr. Parks, is that, we also have one coming on three?
That's it, it relates to item three, but there's also some that are germane to item number three. I believe you have two different ones, is that correct? I'll defer to Mr. Parks, but I think until we circulate, we might want to just hold it on the desk.
All right, well, then we'll hold item three on the desk and item five at this point, and go back to the regular agenda, the items that were called special. So we'll recess the special meeting and go back, return to the regular meeting? Okay. Oh, Mr. Padilla?
Yeah, item five from the special rather quickly, it was strictly for a, an amending motion, mostly technical in nature, I believe it's been distributed.
Well, we have two, Mr. Parks, motions, five, that were being-
On the special agenda?
Special five, yeah, so we'll hold that. All right, we will then return to the regular agenda for the items that were called special.
Madam President, there is a commissioner on item, excuse me, on the regular meeting, item number four, and that's the Arts Parks Committee Report.
Is the commissioner present?
And it's Mr. Rudy Ortega Jr.
Is Mr. Ortega here? Yes, he is, he's coming forward. Welcome, Mr. Ortega, why don't you come forward to the chairs. Any council member want to speak on this nominee, this appointment? Welcome. I see no council member, so the matter confirming this appointment is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Ortega, for your willingness to serve, you are confirmed. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, we should take up public comment at this time.
There are a couple of cards under general public comment, the council calls forward. Vicky Cas, oh, actually, that's for a later presentation. Melrose Larry Green, under general public comment, somebody under Citizens for Education in place of Public Golf, Mort Allen, Donna Doherty, and Richard Robinson, please come forward, this is general public comment for today's meeting.
Good morning. This is kind of last minute because of the Board of Education thing this morning. Amy and I were in Honolulu last week, and we stayed at the Royal Hawaiian Hotel, and it was such a grand old palace, and we sat there and we started thinking about the Ambassador, which I had my high school prom there in nineteen fifty-six, anyway, and we think that this new committee should look into the possibility of saving the Ambassador and perhaps making an adult school project where it's restored as an education process, and then all the unions use it as a training center for all the different workers, and make it into an international hotel instead of bulldozing it, and I just think it's something that we should look into. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, everybody, I'm Melrose Larry Green. I was going to be here yesterday, my car was all starting, I was going to come see the celebration with Mayor Han, but unfortunately, there was a homicide right outside my apartment in Hancock Park, in the fourth district. A woman was killed, stabbed to death on the alley, right adjacent to Willoughby Avenue, behind Club AD. I can't tell you how many times we tried to have Club AD closed. The LAPD testified about shootings, killings, drug dealing, so yesterday I had an uninvited guest, a dead body outside my apartment. I don't think any of you want to have a dead body outside your apartments, not a good way to start the day. Quiet! If you want to talk, talk outside.
Please continue.
Secondly, I'm, I got to collect my thoughts, the noise distracts me, President Padilla. Secondly, since it's on public comment, we all know about the terrible shooting in Hawaiian Gardens a few weeks ago of, of a LA sheriff trying to fight gangs, shot in the head by a, by a gang member with a rap sheet about six feet long, and we all know what's going on in this city with the crime, and I think one thing Democrats and Republicans can agree upon is we've got to stop the killings in the city of LA. I wake up this morning to see Tom LeBonde on Channel thirty-five, inspired me, it was an interview he did in the winter, to come down here. And by the way, I called up Tom LeBonde's office as soon as I heard about this homicide, and God bless Tom LeBonde for sending his deputy on probably the busiest day of the year down there to find out what's going on. I saw your deputy down there, and thank you for that. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. The last thing I want to say before I give the floor to the other people in public comment, I know there's a big party tomorrow, and I, I don't go to big parties, big party honoring Mayor Viragosa, I don't go, but I'm there in spirit, but on behalf of many of my Republican friends in Washington, such as Senator Lot, Senator Bunning, President Bush, Senator Bennett from Utah, and many, many others, Governor Schwarzenegger, and you may not like this, I know them all, I congratulate Mayor Viragosa, and I applaud Mayor Viragosa for mentioning President Bush's name in his interview with Geraldo Rivera the other night on Fox. Tom, I'll see you in Washington, DC. Thank you very much, I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. In no particular order, I read all the names of folks under general public comment, please come forward.
I'm sorry, we seem to have some confusion about who the next person is. Good morning, everybody, my name is Donna Doherty, and I'm here to request equal access at Griffith Observatory. I think the money has now gone up from eighty-three million. Excuse me, I hope all of the council members are listening here, this is not just Tom LeBonde's territory, this is all of your responsibility. Every one of you here has a responsibility about Griffith Observatory. You gave thirty-three million dollars more after the twenty-eight million came out of propositions A and K, and it's up to ninety million dollars now, and we have no access at the front entrance. There has never been a plan made, an alternative plan made, to putting it back into nineteen thirty-five. There are twelve steps there, and I have been there watching hundreds of men bend over double to get their child up in a stroller and remain bent over double the whole twelve steps. We don't need that, and we don't need a sign on the front of the lawn after the ninety million dollar renovation saying, "You go to the end of the wing, come around on the backside, come in one door, and go the whole length of the wing on the inside to get to the front door so you can go into the planetarium." It's not safe, it's not right. We have seventy-eight million baby boomers, and you are continuing to talk when I am telling you anything about this. It is everybody's responsibility in this city. There are three million five hundred people out there who have not been talked to. I've talked to them, and they're saying, "Oh, I thought the ADA applied." It doesn't. They don't have to abide by the normal ADA because they have national historic landmark. We need to make something better for this city. The City of the Angels should not have to put a sign out to redirect people. Everybody should be able to go in that front door, and I want you all, I will give you an invitation to come with me and to come with Bill Gregory, who is one of the top people in the building, excuse me, in the building situation at UCLA. We have the perfect example at Powell Library of what can be done with an historic building without the loss of any historic fabric, but it is there and accessible for everybody. It's a beautiful example, and it's only fifteen miles from here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for allowing me here.
Good morning, President, members, City Council. I commend you for what you have just done in appointing the new committee to work with the LAUSD, and I would like you to think about doing the same thing with the Los Angeles Community Colleges, the nine community colleges that are supposed to help young people after they leave the LAUSD. I've been working to help save sports for many years, and I think it's a great step ahead for the city. On June the eighth, I wrote a letter to Councilman Viragosa, and I'm very happy and pleased that he answered the letter on June the fourteenth. I asked him to please help save the stadium at Los Angeles City College for the young men getting out of our schools like Dorsey and Crenshaw and Belmont and others. If the stadium is destroyed within the next week or two, as planned, it will destroy their hopes and dreams and their parents' hopes and dreams. It's being destroyed to build a child development center that could very easily be placed where the giant golf driving range is now. I'll read the letter from Councilman Viragosa. Dear Mr. Russell, thank you for sending me a fax about the proposed revision of the college master plan at Los Angeles City College. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the meeting on June eighth. I will ask my staff to look into the proposal and how it affects the athletic facilities at the college. We will contact you if we meet need more information. Now I will read you a press conference that is dated June twenty-eighth for immediate release, taxpayers rally to save two million dollar beautiful football soccer track stadium at Los Angeles City College Thursday, June thirtieth, two thousand and five, ten AM, eight fifty-five North Vermont in Hollywood. Bring signs, no hand handles, stay on public sidewalk, save that stadium. I invite every city council member here to come to the meeting to save the stadium for your constituents. If it's destroyed, that stadium is destroyed, your constituents are going to suffer in this city because young men will not go to college there.
Thank you.
Restart football canceled twenty years ago by the elected District Board of Trustees. Six LA community colleges provide football, it is time for equality and fairness at LACC for high school graduates, parents, and others. Rebuild beautiful seventy-five-year-old Snyder Field, destroyed in two thousand and four for a temporary faculty parking lot. Field used by kids and adults as a healthy community park for seventy-five years. Build a great NCAA eight-lane running track. Students and other taxpayers and voters gave LACC two hundred and forty-one million dollars for pop A, double A bonds for classrooms, playing fields, repairs, and parking, not destruction of a twenty-one-row stadium to build a childcare center that-
Let me ask you to conclude, please, and since you have that in writing, we're happy to receive a copy and circulate copies to the council members.
I gave you copies, but I would like to finish it, please.
Well, we have other, we have other people waiting to speak under general public comment, and you've made your point. I'm going to ask Richard Robinson to come forward at this time. Mr. Robinson? Thank you.
We're facing a disaster in the city at LACC for young people.
Mr. President, members, Richard Robinson, neighborhood organizer. It's been several years since I was in this chamber last. I've been with Mayor Newsome in San Francisco, Mayor Marty Blum in Santa Barbara. I believe that most of you know who I am, but I am still writing a book, and as an observer of City Council, I'd simply like to say that, well, let me skip that and simply say that together we are the best. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the general public comment for today's meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you. I have with, with me today representatives from one of our very special LA Bridges Program. This is Deshaun Booker, Program Coordinator, Martha Lopez, a Bridges parent activist, and Francisco Escobar, Bridges student from Adams Middle School. I'm proud to be joined by the folks here from All Peoples Christian Center, the Woodcraft Rangers, and YMCA. All of these organizations work under the LA Bridges One Collaborative. Bridges One is a program aimed at middle school youth to keep them engaged in productive activities and to keep them out of gangs. All these groups work very hard to engage young people at a very young age to create positive alternatives for young people in areas where there are still very few after-school programs. I asked them to come here today to celebrate and to recognize their importance and to highlight the work that they have done. They have been actively involved in creating a better community. Let me just tell you a really great story, and we're going to talk about this today on the agenda. This demonstrates the power of the LA Bridges Program and how it has engaged young people in our community. Earlier this year, Sandra Bryant, who is the Executive Director of All Peoples, contacted me regarding the purchase by a very young child of a very realistic gun from a local ice cream truck. The gun could very easily have been mistaken for real pistol. This young man brought the gun to his LA Bridges teacher, who in turn was able to alert other staff and parents about items being sold off of this ice cream truck in the community. Because of this visit, because of the fine work they did, because of the interconnectedness between the student and his teacher, I was moved to bring forward an ordinance, which we're going to talk about today, that directly deals with the sale of illicit and dangerous goods like toy guns from ice cream trucks. It was only through this positive and open communication that exists through Bridges One that brought this to my attention. So I just wanted to highlight this story. What we do really does affect people's lives. It's just one of the great examples of how these programs really engage young people. And so today, I just wanted to ask you to join me in recognizing the work of this program, the individuals here, because they deserve our thanks and our support. And I'd just like Deshaun, Martha, and Francisco to say a few quick words.
Thank you, councilwoman. Good morning. I first want to acknowledge that I am so excited and pleased to hear that in this room everyone shares the same common enthusiasm as to our after-school programs in our youth today in Los Angeles, and I am so excited to hear that and see that that is continuing to move forward. Yes, we are representing the LA Bridges Program, a program that was started and initiated in nineteen ninety-seven as a direct result from what happened within our schools with the high gang-related homicides that happened right here in our own Los Angeles area. As a result of that, Mike Hernandez, Margaret Lee Thomas, were compelled to do what? Create a program that would actually- Create a program that would actually pull out our students off the streets, out of gangs, out of criminal activity and devise a plan, a program for them that would be a place of a safe haven where they can begin to know who they are and have a sense of self-pride. Thus, LA Bridges was birthed. I want you to know and we want you to know today that LA Bridges is a collaborative partnership where there are 27 middle schools. We have over 100 community-based organizations, community residents and private and public entities that are part of this partnership today. What makes our program unique, what makes it not just an after-school program, is that it has a design that is unique in its own. We service two groups of students, core students and non-core students. Today, we often use the term high-at-risk students. However, all of our students are not just high at risk. We have some that are non-core, which are on another scale. Then we have those that are core students. All of our students receive what we call case management. They're coming to our programs and receive an individual case management plan for their families as well as for themselves. Our students are coming to our program through the principals, through the councilmen, through their counselors and deans. They're being referred through those different venues there. So it is very important that we understand and recognize that LA Bridges is not just an after-school program. It is what we often say and loosely use, "It takes a village to raise a child." LA Bridges is that village. It is raising our children. It is pulling them off of the street, plugging them into what do we call positive roles so that they can become positive role models for our country tomorrow. It is a place that has a unique design and we want you to become a part of that village and you can do so. And we're excited about that. This year, up to date, we have serviced over 14,000 students and we are to be applauding not just ourselves, but those students who are now making a change within their own positive lives. So today, we have brought just a few of our students because it is the end of the year. So we know there are celebratory activities happening and culminations, but we're so excited that our students are here today and we have a parent and a youth that will be giving a testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Martha. Thank you, DeShawn. So you don't lose him, you're next.
Yo vengo en representación de la escuela Carver. Los padres de la comunidad de la escuela Carver les damos las gracias al programa LA Bridges por darnos apoyo. Este programa nos ha ayudado a estar la familia unida. Gracias al programa. Mi familia ha estado siempre ayuda y siempre ha tenido un apoyo excepcional. Muchas gracias al programa LA Bridges y en representación de los padres gracias a este programa.
Thank you.
I'll translate real quick from Ms. Lopez. She just wants to thank the program of LA Bridges for all the support and help she's gone throughout the years with her six children. She's been in the program since 1997, the initiation of LA Bridges, and still continues to be our parent liaison today at Carver Middle School with the LA Bridges Program. And she once again, on behalf of our parents of all LA Bridges Programs, thank you once again.
Thank you, Francisco. Thank you very much and we're going to take a picture. Oh, I'm sorry, Francisco. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Francisco Escobar. I've been with the LA Bridges Programs at All Peoples Christian Center for seven years now. I am currently enrolled at Garfield High School and going to graduate this Friday. I'm going to continue my studies at Cal State Northridge and will be starting this fall. All this was made possible through the LA Bridges Program. I've been in it for a very long time. I have gone to the after-school program at All Peoples where I have been initiated by a plenty of staff who have been there to help me as well as moral support. And thanks to them, I have, I'm now in the track where I am currently heading. I plan to major in marine biology and that's basically it. And I'd just like to acknowledge that LA Bridges has helped me go through this. Thank you very much.
That's a good, that's a good major. So you can see it works. Thanks, everybody. We're going to go in the back and take a picture. That's a good major.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Congratulations to all of you. I believe that is the final presentation for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, coming back to the items called special, let's take item 47, 52 and 56 for a concurrent public hearing and call forward Larry Green. I'm asking you for a favor. One time on all three items, okay?
Actually, I signed up for more than three. I don't know if you know that, but...
Oh, I know you did.
I did, all right, so. Anything for you, anything for an MIT grad like you. You know, my brother went to MIT. I've told you that many times.
Yep.
I had to settle for Brandeis and Cornell. All right, number 47 relates to street improvement among Vermont Avenue. I don't know as much about Los Angeles history as Tom LeBange, very few of us do, but Vermont Avenue is one of the most historic streets in Los Angeles and I think that's very important to clean up Vermont Avenue, put historical markers along Vermont Avenue and encourage tourism to go to Vermont Avenue all the way now that we have that rapid bus going up and down Vermont Avenue. That's 47. Quick, I'm going to go quickly. Item number 52 is the relative to the King Tut Exhibition, making it a special event. I don't know, again, as much about world history as Eric Garcetti, but I know King Tut is a real important person in the realm of things and I want all the young people to, and old people and middle-aged people like me, to avail themselves, please have some respect for me for the King Tut exhibit. Item number 53 is relative to the Third Street Block Party. Of course, I support that. Item number 55, I talked about the homicide in my, next to my apartment yesterday. This is relative to getting a reward money for Jamar Guillory and I spoke about that. I mean, it's insane. It's insane. And item number 56, last, am I going quickly enough on this? Item 56 is relative to historic markers, signs on Windward Avenue and Windward Circle. I know that circle in Venice because, and I, by the way, have no regrets for all the campaigning I did for Antonio. On the marathon trail, we were in Windward Circle in Venice and it's a beautiful part of Los Angeles and I don't just support historic signs there, but all over the city of LA. That's the influence I got from Tom LeBange and Eric Garcetti. There's no reason why LA can't do what San Jose and New York and San Francisco and Boston have done. We have lots of sign makers in the city of LA and the more historic signs that we have, Greg, Jack, Dennis, everybody else, Cindy and those that are not listening, the more tourism you'll have, there's, I'm a New Yorker. Could you guess I'm a New Yorker? I'm not a native, but there's so much history in Los Angeles that, that people don't know about. Last thing, you know the Jack in the Box on Sunset at Coenga? That used to be Scrivner's Drive-In. Elvis Presley used to go there. We need a plaque there. The Hollywood Canteen behind CNN Building, we need a plaque there. So that, I'm just talking about the Windward Circle item so that you'll get the idea. You know, you run the city of LA. Don't let Antonio hear this, but you folks run the city of LA. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And just for the record, that included item 53 as well. So we have 47, 52, 53 and 56 before us. Members wishing to be heard on these items, seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. And as a reminder, all minors approved today are being transmitted forthwith. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
And next item, Mr. President, item number six, and that was called special by Council Member Perry.
Ms. Perry, I think she's still in the back taking pictures. Oh, here she comes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just finishing with the kids from LA Bridges and as I said in my comments, they were really the ones who served as a catalyst for what we're discussing here today and, you know, I really, I just really have to thank them. The problem with selling fake guns on ice cream trucks is a problem for many areas in South Los Angeles and I'm glad they brought it to my attention so that I could do my job more effectively. I want to thank Asha Greenberg from the City Attorney's Office for the work she's done in crafting this ordinance. The ordinance before us today prohibits the sale of replica toy guns, drugs and other illicit goods from ice cream trucks. It gives law enforcement officials the tools that they need to apprehend the ice cream truck operators who are selling illicit goods. It allows the trucks to be impounded for 30 days after an initial conviction. Additionally, it sets guidelines as to the allowable hours of sale and reinforces current city regulations that call for ice cream trucks to be 500 feet or further away from any school site. I, I can tell you many times when I have been out walking at dusk or after dark, it is appalling and frightening to see ice cream trucks out with the music blaring and then see children running across the street to, you know, follow the excitement of the music just to get some ice cream. I hope this ordinance will send a clear message to ice cream truck operators that if they're going, they, they will cooperate with the city of Los Angeles and they need to be good partners in everyone's neighborhood. This means simple things like picking up trash that is often left behind and respecting young people by not selling illicit goods. I think Ms. Greenberg is here. If any council members want to ask questions, is Asha here? Okay, great. Just have her come to the table for a few minutes and just get a very, very quick overview.
Oh, just a brief presentation. We also have Ms. Sikowski and Mr. LeBange wishing to speak on this item.
Essentially, is this on? Essentially, it's as Councilwoman Perry stated, the ordinance provides hourly restrictions on the sale of food items, provides that only items such as food can be sold from ice cream trucks. Ice cream trucks cannot sell within 500 feet of a school. And it, the ordinance also provides that minors cannot ride in the vehicle unless the person in control of the ice cream truck is the parent or guardian of the minor. And it does, as Councilwoman Perry stated, provide for a 30-day impoundment for a second or subsequent violation if the vehicle is registered to the violator at the time.
Ms. Sikowski.
Councilor LeBange, have a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, well, Mr. Parks pointed out that the committee, the committee report that we have before us mentioned that the City Attorney suggested exploring the possibility of incorporating background checks into the permit process for very often children approach ice cream vendors alone and it would be very useful to have that information. And we actually in committee recommended that the CLA help process that in seeking state legislation to see whether or not we can be enabled to do that at the state, state level. So it was meant to incorporate that at its, at its action. So I will make that as a verbal amendment that we are asking the CLA to work with the City Attorney to seek state legislation in that regard.
Mr. LeBange.
Thank you. Just, and that, Ms. Sikowski, I did ask you, would mean that an operator of a licensed ice cream truck would have to do a background check?
No, just have a permit, a fingerprint, fingerprint.
Fingerprint permit, that's a very good suggestion. One other question I just want to ask Ms. Perry because I know this is prevalent in schools throughout the city. Sometimes they have push carts that are an ice cream, it's not a motorized vehicle, but it's a push cart. And yesterday I was on Third Street, I don't know if it was near Mr. Garcetti's district or right near Hoover, and it was right next to the curb and it was a unsafe situation. Are we addressing that issue as well?
This ordinance deals with, and correct me if I'm wrong, Asha, the ice cream trucks or ice cream vendors in trucks, vehicles, am I correct?
Yes, it only applies to motorized vehicles, so it would not apply to push cart vendors.
Right. You know, I think with the governance committee that we talked about, which is looking at the big global issues in the school district, there needed to be some focus and relationship stronger between us and the various departments on issues related to this because if you do go by, it's like a beehive of activity sometimes and they could step off the curb and there'll be a tragedy on that. So thank you for your leadership on this, Ms. Perry and Ms. Sikowski. And I'll talk to staffs later on those issues related to the smaller push vehicles, non-licensed vehicles.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate Ms. Perry's effort on this. It's only about a 20 or 30-year problem that we've been trying to resolve and also the correction Ms. Sikowski brought forward. The one area I'd like to see verbally if we could add to the CLA response is that often these vendors are a fleet operation. They have a variety of trucks so that we do not have to go and capture each truck and put them on notice. It appears we have to have, we should have one of two things, a notice to the business that says they've been cited so the business cannot reflect that they are unaware and also that, on that study back from the CLA, if they can include, how do we deal with a business that has more than a singular vehicle but multiple vehicles that might be selling the product? Do we then have to have legislation to address a business in addition to the individual actions of the driver? And so if we can look at that, come back on the CLA report later.
Ms. Zine.
A question on enforcement, who's going to be enforcing the regulation?
I believe LAPD will enforce it because violations are misdemeanors.
And what type of training program will they be given on this?
There's no provision at this point for a training program, but certainly we are available in our office to discuss any questions that they may have about the ordinance.
And this is centered at ice cream trucks and a lot of them congregated schools. Is the school police been involved in this at all since they have an enforcement branch?
I don't believe the school police have been involved in this, no.
Okay, they do have enforcement powers and somehow whatever ordinance takes effect, is this going to be an infraction or a misdemeanor?
This is a misdemeanor.
Okay, they do have that enforcement power. So somehow through the connection, LA Unified School District Police should get briefed on it. They do have uniformed officers that do enforcement. The other question I have on that is, how are we going to educate the vendors that are currently selling the products?
The ice cream truck vendors have already approached us and they approached Councilwoman Perry as well. We made some changes to the ordinance in response to their concern. I was also contacted by the president of the International Ice Cream Vendors Association and he had some concerns about the hours. So they're already aware of the ordinance.
So there's an association that represents, it used to be the Good Humor Truck when I was a kid that would go down with the Helms Truck. First you get your donuts, then you get your ice cream. We don't have those anymore. Now there's a lot of individuals that get a truck and they go and buy ice cream and they go out and sell it. They're not associated with that in the organization. They're, they're basically out there in the community sometimes 10, 11 o'clock at night, which I've seen in certain parts of the city. How do we get the message out to them, other than enforcement?
The vendors that I've spoken with have told me that there apparently is already an informal network and they've told me that they have tried to speak with these people who are selling these items that they think they shouldn't be selling, but they still persist. So this ordinance should have a deterrent effect.
So the ordinance will prohibit them having those items inside the vehicle?
Yes, well, they cannot sell those items or offer them for sale.
Okay, could they have them inside the vehicle? And the question is, I'm looking at the practical aspect of enforcement. An officer sees an ice cream truck going down the street with the bells ringing, stops, children come up, they have to see a transaction or are the officers permitted to look in that vehicle without a sale taking place? For example, if they can't sell, if they shouldn't be able to carry it inside the vehicle, is that part of the ordinance where those items are prohibited inside the vehicle?
The ordinance prohibits dispensing and then it defines dispensing as offering or exposing for sale.
So they could legally have it inside the vehicle and just not sell it?
If they're offering it for sale or exposing it for sale, that would be a violation of the ordinance as well.
But they can carry it inside the vehicle and not sell it when the officers... See, what I'm trying to do is plug the hole where they don't have it in the display window, but they have the merchandise on the truck. We should have the ordinance to say you can't have this item on the truck, period. If they're permitted to have it on the truck and we're looking at our enforcement officers to do whatever enforcement can take place, you can't have it on the truck, period. If you have it on a truck, that should be a violation. That's the issue because they're not displaying it, but the people in the community, the kids know what they're selling, they know how to go up and they're not only selling illegal products, but sometimes dangerous products. So how can we make that ordinance tight to prohibit them? For example, you can't have an open container of alcohol in a car, you could have a closed container. How do we have that law established to ban those particular products from being inside that particular vehicle?
This particular ordinance is, has used the same definition that we use in catering trucks for dispensing, which is offering for sale, soliciting, having it on the truck for sale. I understand your concern, but obviously this is not written with just possession in mind. If you have some particular items you think that they should not possess at all, then obviously we can incorporate that either in this ordinance or amend the ordinance at a later stage if this is not sufficient to address the problem.
Well, the enforcement's going to take place by the police officers. That's who's going to do the enforcement. We're not going to have our gang enforcement officers enforcing it. Normally it'd be the uniformed officers. For them to see the transaction is going to be somewhat difficult. They know they can't sell it when the officer's around, so they sell it when the officers aren't around. What I'm trying to say, when an officer has the ability to take enforcement action if those particular items that we're concerned with are on that particular vehicle, they get stopped for a red light or speeding or whatever the case they get stopped for, they see those items, then they can take enforcement action. Without enforcement, it's not going to really do a whole lot to try and stem this problem that we're having. So maybe we need to come back and tighten it and see what kind of enforcement. We can put all these laws on the books. If they're not enforced by the police, they mean nothing. mean nothing. We've got banded taxicabs that are running throughout the city, there's little enforcement, and Jim Perry is trying to solve a problem. And what I want to do coming from the enforcement side of law is to say, how do we make it feasible for the officers to do the enforcement, so we can put some teeth in it, so they know they can't do that in the City of Los Angeles? That's what my goal is. And maybe we need to tighten it up and let the police department see how enforcement goes, and if we have to make it tighter, and see what kind of enforcement we actually get. The officers are obviously involved in a lot of activities. I don't know if there's going to be a priority on their enforcement efforts or not, but if we don't enforce it, it's really going to be a meaningless, one more misdemeanor on the books.
Certainly.
And it's a concern to me with the children, and we've heard reports of items that have been dispensed out of these vehicles that shouldn't be dispensed out of these vehicles for a lot of reasons. So will you network with the police department?
Yes.
Or will this... Okay, but I also suggest you contact the L-Unified School District Police?
Certainly.
And inform them of that, and they'll be able to hopefully, hopefully help do some enforcement on it. Asha, thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank you for your hard work. There's a lot of procedures we'll be following and trying to implement, a better quality of life. But one of the most frequent issues that has arisen in my district, especially in the northern part, is the issue of very loud music blaring from the ice cream trucks constantly. We have certain trucks that have, I guess, specific routes. I guess informally, they arrange it so that certain trucks go into certain residential pockets. But it has been at least four different community meetings, I have these monthly community meetings, where I'll get, I'll cater a folks, five to six families that literally are trying to figure out how to respond to this, how can we control it. What I wanted to ask is, if the community folks get a license plate or an ID number on a truck that's blaring loud music, and I know my council staff, my field staff has done a good job connecting with these folks, not only the community but the vendors, the truck drivers, they quiet down for a little bit, then they come back blaring the music very loud. Many seniors who are at home find it very disturbing, because it's so loud, it's penetrating, and they don't get any rest, because they're going in that constant route that they have. Is there a way to add some level of reporting? Let's say if a vendor is told, either through a citation or recognized through a warning, if you get more than two warnings, that there could be either a misdemeanor or something more serious charged against them because they're violating the law of how loud you can essentially be blaring this music in these residential pockets?
The city has a noise ordinance, and it has to be above a certain decibel level. I'm not sure exactly how loud these people are playing their music, or whether it's the loudness or it's the continuous nature of the music.
It's actually both.
It's both. And so I would have to get more information. We could, of course, incorporate that into this ordinance if it's ice cream trucks that are the culprits, that are playing the loud music.
No, I've spoken to them myself, when they come into the park and it's really loud, and it's the same individual who's in the neighborhood, and they're saying, look, I have to compete with a lot of other noise, I have to know the kids that I'm here, but inadvertently, or they're just not considering the quality of life issues for many folks who are the seniors and the folks who have that, who need that quiet time. And it's very penetrating. So what would be the best step to take, in your opinion?
Well, I can discuss it with your staff and find out exactly what kinds of problems there are and work on the best way to address that, whether that's in terms of the number of times somebody circles a particular neighborhood, the level of the noise, we can probably address it perhaps both ways in the ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Well, I look forward to working with you on that.
Ms. Perry.
Thanks, Mr. President, and I appreciate Mr. Zine's comments on the practicality of enforcement. I do want to highlight that most of the complaints and my own firsthand observations usually have not taken place anywhere near a school. They often happen well within someone's residential neighborhood or well within a community neighborhood, often at dusk or after dark. And while it's important to involve the school police, I think that is kind of a different problem, because when kids let out, there are often illegal food vendors on the perimeter of the school. And, you know, we try to work with our schools to ask the principals to go out and mobilize the school police on the perimeter of the school, but I'm talking about areas, in residential areas, dusk, after dark, and as Mr. Parks pointed out, often on very narrow streets, where there's a lot of cars parked in the street, children dashing out between the cars in low visibility situations. So I just wanted to make that distinction. And as for the noise, Mr. Reyes is absolutely correct, and again, my observations at dusk or after dark, where the ambient noise level is low, and it just disrupts an entire block as the ice cream truck goes down. And it's maddening, particularly for senior citizens who may prefer to have an earlier bedtime, and to have this going on at night is extremely disruptive.
Okay, let's proceed with the vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Ms. Smith.
President, I was unfortunately in the back discussing something with the city attorney when item 30 came up, and I wish to ask that it be reconsidered.
Okay, we have a motion for reconsideration, item 30. Let's open the roll and reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that's reconsidered, called special by Mr. Smith. All right, before proceeding to the next item, colleagues, we have on the desk items 28, 30, 31, 33, and 55 still. It's about five minutes to noon, and I think we all know, we have a very special presentation at the end of our meeting today, so let's try to proceed with the items still before us as quickly as possible. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number 28, called special by Councilmember Reyes, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Mr. Reyes, on 28, simply for the amending motion?
Sorry, Council President, can we hold this on the desk? We're still working with another office and trying to work out some details.
No problem. Same goes for item 31, you called item 31 special?
31, we can move forward.
Okay, questions have been answered?
Yes.
Anybody else wishing to speak on item 31?
And there is an amending motion also on 31.
Let's consider item 31 without objection, as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Colleagues, item 33 or 55, either of those that we can move forward with? Rather quickly, who called item 33 special? 33 was called special to hear from members of the public. And 55?
I don't know.
Okay, I think item 55, that card has either been pulled or... Okay, we don't have cards on 55 anymore. Can you proceed with the vote on item 55? Let's open the roll, item 55, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Not yet. Mr. Smith, let's come back to item 30.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I understand there are four people here from the community that were not allowed to speak on it, although we have had a public hearing at the committee, just as a courtesy of the fact that they've driven from Chatsworth, I'd like to ask for a 10-minute public hearing on the matter. I know we're short of time, but I appreciate the 10 minutes so they can introduce testimony.
Okay, I think the cards have been added to the file. Folks in the audience, you know who you are. Anybody here on item 30, please come forward and introduce yourself as you approach the microphone.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. My name is Andre Vanderwijk, and I've been in the community for over 35 years, in the Chatsworth community. You may have heard Chatsworth recently and the fact that we've got a lot of land, rural area, and we're proud of that. I'm especially proud of the fact I wear a lapel button, I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I think you'll see more of us wearing the lapel buttons and being outspoken, if you would, and especially in the community. This is the first time before the council, I appreciate the time, and I'd just like to go on with the fact that the, my wife and I both are members of the Chatsworth Neighborhood Council. We'd like to preserve the rural way of life. The proposed project is not a fit for where it's at, it's the only project that would be north of Devonshire and on De Soto. If you take a look at the Chatsworth community, there is a specific plan on both Devonshire, going from Mason, going west to Topanga, going to Morello Street. We have problems with that specific plan on keeping businesses looking good, clean, without banners, things like that. If you agree to a commercial project in this area, I think that we would start some problems, and especially with additional possible requests for zone changes for the rest of De Soto. We asked for an extension originally of time, and that is the reason why, is because before the last meetings, health and safety issues had been addressed, and we never saw anything, we never heard anything prior to the meeting. There was also environmental issues, there were changes that we saw from the plans, including the fact that it's an 86,000 square foot storage facility, it still continues to be an 86,000 square foot storage facility. We have not seen where there's an approved access to the DWP, we also have not seen any traffic studies. There was a reference by the councilman's aide on a health and, on a health issue, and I would like to interject, or I would like to introduce this, and this is a map that's taken by satellite, where a number of homes just west of that freeway are actually right next to the freeway, and they don't seem to have a problem with the health and safety issues. Additionally, there's a high school plant just to the east of there, and so we would like to look at that. And there again, if there's a health and safety issue, it certainly would impede the high school. Additionally, I'd like to introduce, there was a letter dated from Councilman Smith, dated June 17, 2004, where he said that he would agree or support the proposal if the overall square footage was reduced by 8,000 square feet to a minimum, or maximum, I should say, of 78,000 square feet. And that has now been done. The project still is 86,000 square feet. If I can, could I hand this in, and I'll defer to the next person?
I'll have the sergeants take that from you and share it with the council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And I have found the speaker cards that were submitted. We also have a card from Linda Vanderwijk as well, Philip Hess, and Jeanne Plum. If you would all please come forward, maybe form a line behind the podium that would expedite our hearing.
Jeanne Plum, 10755 De Soto Avenue, south of this project. I am also introducing into the file, appellant Gary and Maureen Levitz, material which I've already submitted into the file. Today, my material consists of a guide from a map in which it cites nine storage units alone in the Chatsworth area, all located in the properly zoned commercial industrial area, none in our residential RA horsekeeping scenic corridor and preservation area in the northern end of Chatsworth where I live. Also, I am submitting the following uses by right on this subject property or by conditional use, which the applicant can enjoy a substantial development right without requiring a variance. Among them, besides single-family homes, are plant nurseries, boarding facilities, public and private schools, religious institutions, the raising and selling of produce, state disabled housing, all sorts of applicable properties, sites and rights that can be enjoyed without variances required by their neighbors, which we do not have. And lastly, I am submitting to the file a bona fide accepted city planning traffic study from an adjoining site called the Sierra Canyon High School, in which extensive studies required for traffic mitigation are cited in this. And it shows that this project should have had a traffic study, which it did not, and requires mitigation measures. To enter onto this property, you will have to go into the freeway access lane, which is only provided by De Soto and on a state highway, the 118. So in order to turn onto this project, you will be stopping traffic on the freeway. In order to come out of this project and only turn right, the attendant will have to probably be out there full-time to prevent traffic from crossing six lanes of De Soto to get onto the 118. I cannot think of a site that is more unsuited to this project and more unsuited to commercial. I request that the council reject the findings of the Planning Commission and Plum, and support the zoning administrator's denial of this variance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other speakers?
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Philip Hess. I'm the attorney for the appellant in this matter. I believe that in this case, the zoning administrator got the decision exactly right. The Planning Commission's decision has absolutely no evidence to support it. It rests on three premises, each of which is false. The first premise is that there cannot be residential development on this site. That is proven to be false, because if you look at this area and the exhibits that the appellant's have put in today, you will see there's residential development adjacent to the freeway on comparable sites all through this area. The second premise the Planning Commission stated was that there cannot be any development on this site other than a storage facility, there is no other economically viable use. Not only is there no evidence to support that, other than a completely undocumented assertion by the applicant, but if you look at the other uses permitted either by right or by CUP in the RA1 zone, it is clear that there's a large group of uses this applicant could have availed himself of, all of which are potentially economically viable. There's absolutely no consideration given to those. The third premise the Planning Commission rests on is that, in this case, the public welfare will be served by a storage facility, and because the public welfare will be served by it, the general plan has been conformed with. There is no evidence to support either of those statements. It is clear from documents submitted by the appellant's today, this neighborhood is well-served, if not saturated, by public storage facilities. There are eight already open around this neighborhood, and there's another one that has been approved and is in the process of being developed. It is absurd to suggest there is a further need for more public self-storage in this area. The idea that opening this facility will satisfy conformity with the general plan flies in the face of even a cursory comparison of this project with the general plan. The general plan designates this area for low-density residential use, consistent with horsekeeping. To build an 86,000 square foot facility, dropped right in the middle by variance in a residential zone, shreds the general plan completely. Finally, there has been no meaningful compliance with the California Environmental Quality Review Act in this case. The mitigated negative declaration never even considered traffic as an impact. The applicant belatedly did a traffic study to try and improve the record, which was never reviewed or approved by the city. And no one has ever considered the incredible impacts of entrances and exits from this site in the middle of a freeway entrance lane. Doesn't appear to be any documentation that those have been evaluated or mitigated. There are also clear environmental impacts that have not been studied concerning impact on the view corridor. De Soto is a scenic view corridor designated by the city, and there's no consideration of impacts on neighborhood character or land use. For all of these reasons, the Planning Commission's decision is without substantial evidence. You should reverse it, you should reinstate the decision of the zoning administrator in all respects.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This now concludes public comment on this item. Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly to answer some of those concerns, first of all, the other housing that has been allowed in the other area was not allowed by me, it was allowed by the previous councilman. I've made it very clear, I do not intend to allow housing within 500 feet of that freeway corridor, because based on the recent USC study, that we know that the health impacts, particularly on children, is four times higher for asthma and other diseases in those corridors. And it's my intent not to allow any further housing along that corridor within 500 feet of the freeway. I think it's bad planning. Secondly, on the traffic issues, we know very clearly that a public storage facility has far less... has far less traffic impact than the housing that would be allowed there if we went with your plan, which would allow, I believe, was seven houses or something on that order. But the order of magnitude was that the housing that would be allowed there on that same corridor, your concern about traffic issues would have been about four times higher than the traffic that would be generated by a public storage facility. I felt the neighbor council erred in its decision. I believe the Commission and Plumb was correct in their decision, and I ask again that we sustain the Commission, excuse me, the Planning Land Use Committee report and overturn the appeal. Thank you.
Other council members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's reopen the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Let's move forward to item 33 at this time and call forward Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins on item 33.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. At this time, we must say no on item number 33, because 90% of all insurance businesses has been stolen now by blacks and African-American people. While all money is returned back to Africa, all insurance must be canceled. Until we get control over, where is the money going if it's here in the United States of America? Plus, all people must know that all state central insurance, New York life insurance, former insurance, it's all out of business since 40 years backwards. I'm very concerned, Councilwoman Jan Perry, concerning these trucks, about the insurance for these trucks. I would say no on vendors' license, or for them to cook at this time, because we're at war. If they're using these trucks to cook at different factory areas, at different locations on street, we must also be cautious concerning ice cream. It is not so much just the gun, or the faking of the gun, it is the location that is connected near churches. Bishop Noah Jones Church, for instance.
Thank you very much.
Of the apostolic faith. I have three minutes, sir, two minutes.
I need to ask you to conclude.
Okay, I will conclude, thank you. But we must be very cautious that they are connected, where they are poisoning the ice cream. I ate some for myself. Now it's going back to significant disease, which is diabetes or whatever.
Okay.
But the ice cream is poisoned from the bishop.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Members wishing to speak on item 33? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, I believe item 28 is still on the desk. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I believe the respective office has been working on this project, given the other issues that we feel they are at a point where they can move forward, so we can move it forward to a vote.
Okay. Other members wishing to be heard on item 28? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Madam Clerk?
The next two items are both items from the special meeting. Item number three from the special meeting has two amending motions that have been distributed.
Okay. Any further discussion? Amending motions for item three of the special agenda? If there's no further discussion, we can take up the amending motions without objection. They do not conflict with one another. Let's open the roll on the item as amended, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number five, also from the special meeting, has two amending motions, and those have also been distributed.
Okay. And again, if they don't conflict with one another, and there's no objection, we can take up item five from the special agenda as amended. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Madam Clerk?
That would clear the desk. Do you wish to do the housekeeping items?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
If there's an excuse on the desk, Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Tuesday, July 5th, to leave at 11:45 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Garcetti is excused.
And that clears the desk.
We now have a special presentation. Yes, Mr. Labons.
Special presentation be held over to next Tuesday, and every Tuesday thereafter.
I... Do I see any objection? Mr. Zine objects, so we're gonna have to just note and file that suggestion, but thank you very much, Mr. Labons. Mr. Zine does support it. Then, Mr. Reyes.
Every Tuesday, Cindy.
Well, we're gonna refer that to committee, and in the meantime, hear from our council president, Mr. Alex Padilla, for a special presentation, of which we have a number of special guests in chambers. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and if I could have one of my staff members help me out with a piece of wood that's right by that desk over there. And let me ask Cindy to join me at the podium. If you haven't, you will.
Watch your language, Mr. Padilla.
Absolutely, you will. Special day for Cindy. As I look into her eyes, I just see a lot of love for the city, and a lot of love for a building and a chambers where she grew up. Years and years of her life, years and years of service to the city of Los Angeles, unfortunately in an era of term limits, many of which I wasn't able to personally see or be a part of. But I can tell you this, colleagues, when I first joined the council in 1999 as its newest member, among the immediate significant impressions I got of this place, among the most important things to just learn and accept as quickly as you possibly can, was that Cindy Misakowski knew her stuff, and Cindy Misakowski was better than anybody else, the one who can pull us all together. There were many a time, my first two years in the council, where it was either a controversial planning issue, or something of another policy taste that was split in the council. There was people on this side, people on that side, people who felt passionately about it, and as soon as you have one or two members maybe absent for the day, you don't know if there's eight votes for anything, not to solve it, not to put it to rest. You know, what do we do? Can you try to bring somebody over to your side, or, you know, have somebody peeled from your side away to get the eight votes for business to move forward? And just when we thought it was impossible, just when we thought, there we go again, we're stuck, we can't figure our way out, Cindy Misakowski would push her button and come up with a third way, a compromise way, without compromising ourselves for the city to be able to move forward. That was my initial impression of Cindy Misakowski. The same Cindy Misakowski that I believe, when the city truly needed her, not just as chair of public safety, but when the city was confronted with a consent decree brought down upon the city by the U.S. Department of Justice, doesn't get much bigger than that, who was in the position that the city leaders trusted to shepherd us through that, and to oversee not just its adoption, but its implementation? And we took one of our greatest and final steps just yesterday towards achieving true compliance, it was Cindy Misakowski. For the last several years, we've known that we've needed to do something with LAX, and the clock was ticking, when the city didn't exactly see a way forward in a united way. Some people wanted to do more, some people didn't want to do anything, few people were lost in the middle, and not everybody had done their homework and read all their reports. Along came Cindy Misakowski in what I believe was an 11th hour because of the dating of the data underlying our master plan and the entire process. At the most critical junctures of recent history for the city of Los Angeles, we've been able to count on Cindy Misakowski, and she has not failed us. She has not let us down. It's only been a culmination. These aren't just feathers in the hat, these are a culmination of her years of learning, her years of experience, her years of success here in the various positions she's held within the city, especially as serving as one of our colleagues. It is sad that she is forced to retire because of term limits. When people call term limits a mixed bag, yes, there may be some upside, because many of us are here, and it wouldn't be if it wasn't for term limits, but the downside of term limits couldn't be captured any better than in us losing Cindy Misakowski, because we won't have not just her knowledge and her work ethic, but her value system and her ethics to help lead this city. So Cindy, for all you've done for the city, for your support of me personally, and for all that you've taught me at some good times that we've shared along the way, I just want to say thank you and congratulations, and the least that we can do. Is present you with this small resolution, which we hope captures just a taste, but the right taste, of your service to the city of LA. Thank you. Before we open up for council members to speak, we have the first of two videos, the first put together by her staff, I believe, if we can roll the tape.
Cindy Misakowski came to Los Angeles to attend UCLA. As a chemistry major, she wanted to be a nuclear physicist or an astronaut. Even then, she dreamed big. Inspired by Pat and Jerry Brown, and her hero, Robert F. Kennedy, Cindy soon was bitten by the political bug. Cindy volunteered for Lil Melagranos' campaign for Los Angeles City Council in 1971. In 1972, she started volunteering for Marvin Browdy's campaign for county supervisor, and a dynamic duo was born.
Do you remember when you first came to work for me, Cindy? You did everything. We rode all over the 11th Council District, and we looked at everything and reported on everything, and saw things that neither of us had ever seen before. It was a great time.
Cindy joined Marvin's council staff later that same year, working in the district office, helping constituents, and beginning a lifelong love affair with urban planning. A rising star, Cindy earned the respect of the constituents as well as other council members like Zev Yaroslavsky. Together with Browdy, Cindy and Zev teamed up to author and promote Proposition U, which limited building heights and density citywide. She also worked to pass Proposition O, which banned oil drilling along the coast of Los Angeles. The legacy of these two landmark legislative initiatives still lives on today.
I remember sitting up late at night counting petition signatures with you, and counting 200,000 petitions is quite interesting. You have been a real warrior, and a pleasure to be in the bunker with on some of the tough issues that we faced back then, along with your great boss, Marvin Browdy.
Her work on San Vicente Boulevard to transform that into one of the most beautiful transportation corridors. The Brentwood community absolutely admires her and will miss her tremendously.
It was during this time that Cindy met real estate developer Doug Ring, and somewhere, while debating building heights and urban density, these two unique individuals fell in love.
We met because she was on the wrong side of a ballot proposition.
As one newspaper article reflected under the heading of "Opposites Attract." Like rival kingdoms who seek peace through marriage, the slow-growth movement and real estate developers will be joined today in holy matrimony.
Whatever one can say about this kind of bizarre relationship, the one thing you can say is it's been an interesting ride.
Cindy continued her career trajectory, getting involved in many issues, including open space preservation and managing the building growth occurring in the Santa Monica Mountains.
She's a champion who fought for this city for many years, is a great deputy, great chief deputy to Marvin Browdy, the father of the Santa Monica Mountains, and she's the first big sister of the Santa Monica Mountains and that great open space.
In 1994, her good friends, Ira Yellen and Uri Hershur, made her an offer she couldn't refuse, to be the first executive director of the Skirball Center. She made one of the hardest decisions of her life in leaving the city she loved, to help the Skirball Center fulfill its dream of building an artistic and cultural space celebrating Jewish life in the United States.
Thank you so much for being a part of my life, part of the life of the Skirball Cultural Center. Without you, there is no doubt that this garbage dump on Sepulveda Boulevard would never have been transformed into a Garden of Eden in Oasis.
Anyone who knew Cindy knew she wouldn't be able to stay away from City Hall for too long. In 1996, Cindy decided she wanted to fulfill yet another dream, to succeed her mentor and friend Marvin Browdy in representing the 11th Council District. And so Cindy hung up her hard hat, donned her famous pumps, and began precinct walking. One of her first endeavors after getting elected was to focus on improving parks in her district. In 1996, the voters approved Proposition K, which for the first time in 30 years enabled the city of LA to repair and build new parks. The pool at the Stona Recreation Center in West Los Angeles leaked 30,000 gallons of water per day and had to be closed. Cindy set her sights on finding the money needed to tear down the rundown facility and build a new state-of-the-art pool for the kids.
This pool is really important for the community, because it's an area of a lot of families, a lot of other activities are going on on the recreation center.
She also worked in partnership with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy to commit $3 million in Prop K funds to the preservation of 234 acres in Mandeville Canyon, saving it from development.
From all of the open space that we've worked on, to the oil on the beaches that is not there because of you. So you have no idea how much pain it is for me to be saying goodbye to this part of your life.
Cindy, this may be, probably will come as a surprise to Doug, but I love you, and I have always loved you since you were just a kid at UCLA coming into Marvin's office.
In an effort to bring a more direct connection from City Hall to the Valley, Cindy struck out to create a Van Nuys City Hall. This building would house the city departments that provided the direct services those communities needed in their own backyard. In 2003, Cindy made this dream a reality when they opened the Marvin Browdy San Fernando Valley Constituent Services Center.
It's a proud moment for me, and I think also for the San Fernando Valley.
Three, two, one.
The building was designed at 134,000 square feet for a fixed price, $34 million.
In 1999, Cindy reluctantly assumed the role of chairperson of the city's Public Safety Committee. In the wake of the Rampart scandal, Cindy instantly became the council's leader on issues of police reform, risk management, and implementation of the consent decree.
You helped us from day one in the negotiations, and now in making sure that we implement it. Your constant vigilance in keeping us on track have really helped us and made the police department a better place.
Cindy, on behalf of the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department, let me extend to you sincere congratulations and thank you for a job well done. You've been great to work with, you've always done well by this department, and you will certainly be missed.
Working with the city attorney's office, Cindy helped to control the fiscal impact of the Rampart litigations.
Certainly with respect to the Rampart scandal, a dark and sad chapter for our city, she has helped us move forward and put that behind us.
Recognizing that LAPD needed to increase the number of officers, Cindy worked with the Personnel Department to streamline the recruiting and hiring process, ensuring that qualified recruits would not fall through the cracks.
We had a terrible relationship with the police department, and we couldn't hire a police officer to save our lives. Because of your support, we are now able to hire police officers and keep up with our goals.
Cindy has shown great leadership for the Los Angeles Fire Department in supporting the EMS Resource Deployment Program, putting full-time emergency resources throughout the city. She also helped to obtain new LAFD fireboats and helicopters to improve emergency response. In fact, Cindy was so dedicated to understanding the challenges of emergency medical services, she and her staff even took the paramedic physical aptitude test, just to see why women were not performing as well as men.
I don't think there's been anyone that has your presence, your calmness, the ability to take tough situations and not overreact or blow them out of
to take tough situations and not overreact or blow them out of proportion, but rather deal with them in an extremely professional and efficient way. I know I'm gonna miss that.
When the proposed secession of the San Fernando Valley, Hollywood, and San Pedro qualified for consideration by LAFCO, Cindy immediately rose to the challenge of keeping the city together. She truly believed that the greatness of the city was as a sum of all its parts and was determined to improve services citywide and to ensure that the city remained unified.
We're gonna do an awful lot more of that decentralization of government and reorganizing around the local communities.
Your help on secession was tremendous and you were a tireless fighter for keeping the city of Los Angeles together because you believed that we needed to keep this great city together.
Well, the secessionists could outshout us, they could outdo us when it comes to soundbites, but they weren't gonna outsmart us because we had Cindy Misakowski on our side.
Cindy has shown her love of Los Angeles in many, many ways, but none so meaningful as when she sought to protect the landscape of the city from billboard proliferation. At a time when the council was considering allowing a trade for billboards on our freeways, Cindy saw a more perfect solution. She created an ordinance that protected our city from new billboards through the use of supplemental use districts.
There is not a citizens group, a planning group, an architectural group who has not supported banning billboards in the city of Los Angeles.
It didn't matter which part of the city Cindy represented. She was respected by all who came in contact with her. Her gentle voice and incredible depth of understanding of the city put all at ease.
I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for so much, for education, for advice, like don't ever run for city council, Brad, you don't have it in ya.
Even when you scolded me, even when you slapped me around a little bit because I was doing something god-awful stupid, it was still something that I absolutely valued and treasured and I learned from.
You may not have always gotten your way, but there was no question, Cindy was listening.
Fixing our streets, the sidewalks, the pedestrian walkways, streetlights, all this because you pushed when the program wasn't available for Van Nuys, but you made it come true.
Dreams can really come true, and Cindy, because of you, Delano Park, the new Delano Park is here. The old Delano Park building was a small building where we could barely fit 10, 15 kids. It was always very crowded, it was all very hot. Today, we have a beautiful rec park center that is absolutely gorgeous and it matches any in the city.
Recreation and Parks, bless their hearts, had a project where they wanted to plant a lot of flowers and take out 116 trees. Well, the neighbors didn't like that, the community was up in arms, and Cindy came through and stopped that project in its tracks.
This is a hard thing to do because it's saying goodbye. I am standing here at the Tarzana Community and Cultural Center, and you are one of the main reasons this exists.
In 2000, the city of Los Angeles sought to redraw district boundaries. Through a difficult and tumultuous process, Council District 11 became the city's coastal district. This brought Cindy and her current coastal communities of Pacific Palisades, Brentwood, and parts of West Los Angeles, together with other more southern coastal communities of Venice, Playa del Rey, Del Rey, Westchester, and Mar Vista. With the style and ease at which she always approached issues, Councilwoman Misakowski began to understand the issues facing Playa Vista, Venice Beach, and most importantly, the airport. For 10 years, city leadership remained at a crossroads over the future of LAX. Everyone agreed that the airport didn't function as one should in a world-class city, yet few could come to any sort of consensus on what the future of LAX should be. LAX is probably the toughest issue Cindy ever tackled, yet with her land use expertise, her ability to bring opposing sides together, and her ability to navigate complicated and emotionally charged issues, Cindy created the Consensus Plan adopted by the city council in November of 2004. It is one of Cindy Misakowski's proudest accomplishments.
You sacrificed your political will to make sure that you did something good for everyone in Los Angeles, and that's something you can be proud of.
Cindy Misakowski ends her years of service to the people of Los Angeles on June 30, 2005.
You're a big reason why term limits don't work. People like you should get re-elected, not have to leave because of some arbitrary time period. Thank you so much for all the work that you've done for the city of Los Angeles.
Her ability to remain calm in the most serious of situations, the clarity of her vision for the city, and the tirelessness with which she defends the courage of her convictions makes Cindy a true leader.
We can't see those beautiful lips, Denise.
Remember the whole lap dance, that ordinance that we tried to work on? I remember all the issues that have taken place. I hope you come back and visit us often, you'll always have free admission to my office.
Known for always having done her homework, Cindy devotes herself to mastering the complexities of the issues of governance, reaching out to her constituents, and finding solutions to challenges by bringing all sides to the table.
You are, as I've said over and over, the most knowledgeable council member, also the person that has the historical perspective that we often have the ability to go to and check, why are we currently addressing a certain issue? You actually are the kind of person who gets involved in the details and someone who's willing to roll up their sleeves and do what's right rather than what's popular.
You bring to both the staff job and to the elected job the same qualities of fairness and thoroughness, looking for the right solution, not necessarily the solution that you personally want, but one that collectively and consensus-wise is the right one for all the people.
Never straying far from the early days where she dreamed of being an astronaut, Cindy will always be a well-grounded visionary whose reach knows no bounds.
I have always pitied the poor souls who have come before Cindy Misakowski unprepared. She was a master of the city, she was the preeminent master of the city council. We will all tremendously miss her.
I still remember you as Marvin Browdy's deputy, working the land use issues, and over the years, watch this incredible involvement into the state's person you've become.
Well, Cindy, parting is such sweet sorrow. You and I started here almost the same time, almost 30 years ago, and I've learned so much from you and had such a great pleasure working with you. The city is truly gonna be at a great loss for your leadership here.
You really were a bright spot on the city council of Los Angeles. I wish you all the best, wish you and Doug a happy, healthy life, and I hope you continue to have your summer bashes, and I hope I'm invited.
Once Cindy is no longer in City Hall, whose accessories will draw my attention and my interest? There will be no one who can wear pins and have a pin collection quite like Cindy Misakowski. That is going to be an enormous personal loss to me.
I'm not sure how I really should broach this subject and really who to pin this on, but I guess she also taught me how to dress, which was critically important to my success over the last four years.
You know, there's just not a lot of women on the city council, and having you there as a voice of reason, a voice of common sense, I'm sure that Wendy and Janice and I will be calling you a lot.
When I think of Cindy Misakowski, I think of someone who's been a role model for women, someone who's smart, committed, dedicated, and will be sorely missed on the city council.
Cindy, we love you, we're absolutely gonna miss you. Council won't be the same without you, will never be the same without you.
You just smile and use that bright head of yours, and you'll do it very, very well.
Bragley, honey, I will look forward to having you home again.
Well, we have a number of council members who would like to give their live tribute to you as well, beginning with Councilmember Zine, to be followed by Councilmember Perry, Smith, Reyes, Gruehl, LeBons, Weiss, Parks, and Han. Mr. Zine. Thank you. Cindy, when I was driving down the freeway this morning, I was making notes so I would be able to remember all the wonderful activities, wonderful mentoring you did for me, as well as many of my colleagues. I remember the trip to Washington, D.C. I remember you smoking a cigar in Washington, D.C. A woman of character that had patience, understanding on the Public Safety Committee, all the guidance that you always displayed during those Monday morning meetings for Public Safety Committee, all the consent decree meetings that we went through. The knowledge, the experience that you have brought to City Hall, you're a legend here and as term limits come and go, we see the knowledge, the vault of knowledge that you have is gonna be gone. And every time something's come up on the historical issue, Cindy Misakowski's had the answers from your massive knowledge and experience at City Hall. The lap dance ordinance, the famous lap dance ordinance, and how much fun that was going through that issue. The flexibility that we've seen, that you've displayed in committee and here on the floor of the council, the summer blast that you always have, that many of us have been able to enjoy, and the relationship that you've generated with all of us in the community. And when you left the San Fernando Valley and went over the hill, I took that part of Tarzana and Woodland Hills, and they missed you, the Tarzana folks, the Woodland Hills folks, and they often speak about the relationship that was established, that bond that was established from all those years of protecting, serving the communities, so proudly serving those communities. And it's just sad to see this transition take place, and as I reflect, we all look at that and say, our turn in that barrel when we have to bid farewell, when we have to leave. And they say one door closes, one door opens. I know when I personally left the police department, a door opened here at City Hall, and you were a part of that welcoming committee when I came here four years ago as a council member. I know you've got your boots on, you know I've got the Harley-Davidson, since Doug doesn't, since Doug doesn't ride a Harley, you're always invited for the Harley ride. Cindy, it's been a great ride, it's been a great experience, it's been tremendous memories. And all that you have brought to all of us, the semblance of order, the semblance of knowledge, the semblance of politics and how compromise makes it work, and how after we sometimes disagree, we still remain cordial, we still remain friends, because that's a stronger bond than an agenda item that comes before us here in council. So I wish you and Doug well. I know that there's many doors, many golden paths ahead for you. And thank you for mentoring me, thank you for helping me, thank you for guiding me, and may God bless you and Doug in the many, many years that you'll have in the future as a resident of Los Angeles and those little trips that you take to Antarctica and other parts of the world. God bless you, Cindy, God bless you, Doug, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zine. We have some special guests that I know can't stay with us for the entire ceremony, but I'd like to welcome Supervisor Zev Yaroslavsky to say a few words, and then we'll hear from Chiefs Bamahtre and Bratton as well.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I was reminded by Jane Blumenthal that the day I left, everybody loved me too. The only difference is Cindy was loved while she was here. I won't read the proclamation, but I do want to say that the Board of Supervisors, in a rare moment of unanimity and class and intelligence, has passed a resolution honoring Cindy's three-decade career in public service. I want to just make a couple of personal comments. When I came to the city council in 1975, I was 26 years old. Remember those days way back then? Alex, the man sitting in the chair was three times my age, he could have been old enough to be my grandfather. Most of the members of the board were old enough to be my parents. So I really made a beeline for Cindy Misakowski, who was a deputy in Councilman Browdy's office, who was my age, went to college, went to the same university together, and had much more in common as people in our age group than I had with most of my colleagues. And it started a very special relationship that has lasted to this day, and I value that relationship very much. But the real reason I've come to appreciate Cindy and work more closely with her than just about any other person in government is because I find her name the easiest for me to spell. And we have a deal. She votes for Yaroslavsky, I vote for Misakowski, except I can't vote for Misakowski anymore. It's all been said, but I do think it pays to repeat. I remember the day that Kenny Han was honored by this board, by this city council when he was getting ready to retire, and I made the comment at that time that most of what Kenny had accomplished, he accomplished long after his first two terms in office. Some of the great things he did, call boxes on the freeways, emergency medical service issues, many of the great things he did, most of them happened after eight years, because it took him eight years to get, to hit the ground running and to figure out what was going on. And we lose so much when somebody in, literally at her prime, is forced through an artificial legal requirement to leave public service and elective office. And this city, the city council, and the city of Los Angeles as a whole will be the loser for it. And I hope one day, the public will come to understand that and maybe some modifications will be made. But I want to thank you. I want to thank you for, first and foremost, for being a friend and a confidant. Secondly, for some of the great work you did before you became a city council member. We had an inverted structure. Marvin and I worked for Cindy when we passed Prop U and drafted it, and Prop O in the mid-1980s. We all took orders from her, and we had that kind of confidence in her. And especially, I want to thank you for the work you've done when your political neck was on the line. You treaded where no sane politician would dare to tread, whether it was on secession, whether it was on the airport, whether it was on local issues. There wasn't an issue that you would not tackle, and tackle with class, with intelligence, and unflappability. I have never seen you lose your cool, at least to me, in some of the most stressful circumstances. So on behalf of the county family, which has been a partner with you in so many ways, we want to congratulate you on a three-decade career of accomplishment, and I have a feeling you're not done yet, I hope not. Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to invite Chief Bratton to make a couple remarks, Police Department.
It's a pleasure and an honor to be here representing the Los Angeles Police Department. A pleasure, as it's always been, in dealing with you. I had the opportunity to meet the two people beside me a little over two and a half years ago, when along with Mayor Han, they interviewed me at the Getty House for this position, which fortunately, they supported that selection, and here we are. Cindy, you are a very special person, you're a singular person, and you have provided so much guidance and assistance and mentoring to me in my two and a half years here, that I can fully appreciate those that have had the opportunity to know you for many more years than that. On behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department, thank you for all that you've done, and thank you for all that we know you will do in the future for us. All these plaques and presentations you're going to get, I don't know where you're going to put them, because you and your husband have one of the greatest homes and one of the greatest art collections, so you might have a garage or someplace that you can put these there. They're not quite up to the standards of the contemporary art collection you have. I also hope to continue to get invitations to that summer bash that you throw via. Cindy Misakowski is the single greatest argument against term limits, I know, that she truly is. All that expertise, all that knowledge, all that guidance that she provides, that it's, again, maybe that might be an extra career to lead the charge, to do away with term limits in this city and this state, because it truly squanders such great talent. Again, on behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department, we want to present you with this great seal of that department, and I think that seal which features scales of justice is very appropriate, because the thing that you are known for... the thing that you are known for is balance, that you provide, in a sense, justice. You provide reason, that you never anger. And when we come before you as city department heads, we always understand that we're going to get a fair shake. So the appropriateness, as I looked at this this morning, of those scales of justice in perfect balance, you're a singular woman who has kept this city in perfect balance. Thank you so much. If I may, one of the things that we will miss is your staff, that not only are you an exceptional woman, but you have surrounded yourself with exceptional people. And among all of those who work in your office, and they're all great, I'd like to also present to Adina a similar presentation. Adina? Thank you. Also, somebody that's always great to deal with, somebody that's always been there for us, and hopefully we'll get you to pose in one of our outfits for the... Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Bratton. I'd like to recognize this time Chief Bomatre to come forward on behalf of the Fire Department as well.
It's coming, okay. I've asked Louise to stand up here with us also. Louise is on the Fire Commission. I know she takes a great deal of pleasure in recognizing Cindy, and what we've prepared for Cindy is a little special memento from the Fire Department. It's a mounted axe. I'll see if I can turn around here for the camera.
You can wear that as a pin, too.
Originally, we were going to make it detachable, so if things went awry down here at City Council, she could take it with her and come back down, but then I remembered the extra time she's going to be spending with Doug, and we got a little worried at home, so we made it permanent. She certainly has been a tremendous supporter of the Fire Department, and I think you saw some of that. I'm only kidding, Doug. You saw quite a bit of it in the videotape, and I just want to highlight one aspect of that, the emergency medical services plan that Cindy was so instrumental in shepherding through and putting together. And if there's any legacy that's going to have such an impact, it will be the fact that this month, we finally achieved a rescue ambulance in every fire station, 103 fire stations in the city, and that's Cindy's credit. So with that, on behalf of the Fire Department, I just want to express our appreciation and thank you so much for your support, and wish you all the best, and hope that we can see you in the future a lot. Thanks, Cindy. We don't have anything for Adina. I don't think she passed the physical abilities test that day.
I'm told that there's a quick presentation, too, that the Police Protective League would like to make.
Well, first of all, Cindy, on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Police Protective League, and all the men and women out there, thank you. You've been a true inspiration to us, to our police officers out in the field. Your balance, your integrity, everything that was in that video is absolutely true. I could never say all the things that replicate you, but everything in that video was true. So, on behalf of the board, and all our police officers, and the men and women who go out there every day and fight crime, thank you.
While that picture's being taken, we want to recognize the presence also of former Councilwoman Joy Pikes is with us in chambers. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Pikes, for being here. Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Cindy, I, you know, so many wonderful things have been said about you today, and they're absolutely true. And I was really flattered when you said some nice things about me in front of my mother. It really helped. Thank you. And Eric, you know, I told you to take it over the edge, but you really went too far this time, okay, on the props. You and Bernard are probably the two in the council who read every single thing that comes before you. And I think because of that, you have probably been the most effective in pushing him back when he goes too far. And that is a really, really tough job, because you may push him back on Tuesday, and then he's back again on Wednesday, back again on Friday. It's a marathon, and he can go the distance, but you were the one who was, you were able to take him to task, and do it with grace, and elegance, and intelligence, and with substance. And I don't, that's, personally, that's the biggest loss for me. And I don't know how we're going to pick up that slack. It's going to take all of us. And I know Janice and I are probably going to try to do what we can, but we're never going to be able to rise to the level that you did. And thank you in all seriousness. Thank you so much, and I hope there is some way that we can possibly harness the body of work, and your energy, and your talent, and still continue to have a relationship with you. And I know Doug won't mind, okay? Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Next speaker is Mr. Smith.
Now, thank you, Mr. President. I want to say, you know, we've come a very long road, but it's been a very successful road. And the things you've accomplished while you were here will benefit generations of Angelinos for years and decades to come. So I know you leave with a heavy heart, but you have so much that you've accomplished you'd be proud of. I came here July 1st, 1979, and at that point, Cindy, whatever her name was, we couldn't pronounce, was already kind of the preeminent council aide around the chambers. And I was told, if you wanted to get things done, you go see Cindy, because she knew how to get things through the staff level when other people couldn't. And we worked up a good relationship then, and within a year, we were both chief deputies and worked for a long time together. And I was as shocked probably as anybody in the building when, in 1994, you left us, because I said, this is a woman who understands public policy like nobody I'd ever met before. And I felt what a tremendous loss, but it was, again, no surprise, just a couple years later, when you're back as a member of this council. And what a great treasure it's been for me to have an opportunity to work with you, particularly on public policy, because you have the ability to look at the whole issue and focus on the important elements of it, and bring focus where sometimes we tend to be scattered like cats going in all different directions. And I see it every day when we work in Budget and Finance Committee, particularly keeping Councilmember Vader in line. That's not always the easiest thing to do. But you've been truly a dream to work with. I know that after you get done with these nice vacations this summer, you and Doug are going to take, we're going to see you back here, because this is in your blood, and it's in your nature, and this city and this body needs you here. And whatever role that will be, we'll be happy to have you back as part of it, because you have great class, great ability to deal in public issues, like I've never seen anybody. And even when you lose a case, which is rare, but when you do lose, you smile and say, okay, that's the direction we're going, and then you get on board to see that it goes the right way. Very few people have that ability, and I think it's innate in you that you just want to make sure that we do the right thing, and that we do it as a group, and that this city benefits from whatever it is we're doing. So God bless you for being here. It's been my honor and distinction to work with you on both those levels, and I hope to see you back here very soon, because this city needs you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes, to be followed by Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. You know, I'm one of the folks that brings up issues that sometimes makes others cringe. When I talk about the tale of two cities, it's a very real experience that many of us go through, especially if we have not had the privilege or the luxury to live in the west side of the city, the coastal region, and to enjoy those luxuries. And to see how this city has evolved, and to know that there was a person like yourself who had the courage to say, I believe in mandatory inclusionary zoning, to have the courage to say that although you make $14,000 a year with four kids, single parent, you do deserve to have a roof over your head. And that's a position you've taken, and for that, I will always treasure. And to know that, that kind of technical, that kind of policy, courage, to actually elaborate in a very fair way what it means to be one city, that voice will no longer be with us, and for that, the whole city will suffer. But I do know that what you've taught us here, what I've seen you do from a distance, I also started here back in 1988, and was a fly on the wall, watching the department heads do what they do, the staff managers, and actually see individuals like yourself rise to the surface and talk about the issues of equity in a manner that doesn't take away from the American dream, that doesn't take away from our profit margin, but that speaks about the whole, is truly an asset that we need to build up, and hopefully we can learn from you. So I know you're not far, I know you'll be around, and I hope that the sense of one city will continue, and that the kind of courage you've taken, given all the things that have been stated already in the video, will continue to evolve amongst those of us that have been left behind. And you truly are the reason why we shouldn't have term limits. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruel, to be followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And Cindy, it is also with great sadness that we see you leaving City Council chambers, because I won't tell the same kind of story I told yesterday about when I met Mayor Hahn, but when I met Cindy Misakowski, I was also very young here in City Hall, and she was cute, too, Janice says. But you had this reputation, I think as Greg Smith mentioned, you know, you were the person to go to. You were the individual when someone had a problem to be solved, when a council staff or mayor staff didn't know how to handle it, it was to call Cindy Misakowski. And that reputation and experience has only grown as you have become the city council member. And I remember your support as I decided to run for office. Your husband was less supportive. He told me I was crazy and I should not run for office. I didn't listen to him, I listened to you, and how much you had enjoyed being a city council member. But what they didn't include in the video was my comment, which said, you know, every time Cindy stands up on an issue, a lot of us hold our breath and say, please be on our side, because if you're on the other side, you are convincing in your arguments, thorough and detailed. And so I think we have respected you, and I said the other day, and I think it was Budget and Finance Committee, or Public Safety Committee it was, I said, we needed a hotline to Cindy, because we want to be able to call you and say, what would you do in this situation? What's the history? What's going to be best for the city? What's going to be balanced? I thought that Chief's comments were right on track. You are someone who does the right thing for the right reasons. And so I just am glad to have had a few years, a brief few years, with you on the City Council, but most importantly, your friendship, and you and Doug, and I know that is going to continue, not only hopefully at your summer bash, but to other places, that we can spend time together, because I value that friendship in you as a mentor. So we will miss you. I have some flowers for you, just to say thank you, and you're a special place in all of our hearts. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. We have another special guest in chambers, the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, James K. Hahn, who's going to share a couple words as well.
There are some special people that you get to work with in life that you will always remember all your life, and Cindy Misakowski, you're going to be one of those for me, somebody who had just a tremendous intellect, but you combine that with such a wonderful personality. We've heard it over and over again, how cool, calm, and collected you always are, and for those of us who are not, we recognize it in others. And I really appreciate everything you did, especially over the last four years, when I was able to work with you in keeping the city together. We finally got that airport plan off the ground, so to speak, thanks to you, because we were willing to sit down and work together. And that's such a great attribute that you have, is the ability to see a way to get different opinions, different ideas, that can be in opposition, but if you combine those forces, you're actually able to move forward. And you had such a great skill in doing that. And every, one of your colleagues has said so many wonderful things about you, I've been watching it on the television, that I just had to come in here and say a few things to, and I wish you all the best. You are exactly what everybody would want a public official to be, someone whose integrity is unquestioned, someone whose compassion, someone whose drive, and somebody whose abilities match all that. You could, you matched that love you had for your public service and people that you served in your district with the ability to actually make that difference. And so, I know we're both leaving this place involuntarily, under slightly different circumstances, but I know we'll stay good friends. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hahn. Our next speaker is Tom Labange, to be followed by Jack Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And Cindy, you know, there's people from all the different departments planning in here, and Police Commission and other departments here. The thing I loved about Cindy Misakowski, she not only absolutely loved the city and its environments, from San Pedro to Chatsworth, but she also loved the people who worked for the city. And also, she loved the people who worked around her in that thing. What's remarkable about Cindy Misakowski, she's the first person who really elevated herself to a councilperson after working for so many years, so many, you're the first person in a long time, Cindy. Okay? You're the first person, you're the first person in the new millennium. How's that? If I could correct that, Mr. City Attorney, is that all right? There's others who've done it, but you really worked hard, but you always supported the staff, whether it was the staff of any department, which is so important. And that's just a reminder to the other people, too, because who are staff to other council people. It's a talent that one possesses, like Cindy Misakowski, to encourage others to do great things and work with them and listen to them. And also, being a West Sider, sometimes West Siders are very policy-driven. That's true. But you also remembered the potholes, and the stop signs, and the parks, and the fire stations, and the people. I was glad to see you got an axe from the Fire Department, because you did so much for the Fire Department. And Commissioner, it's good to have you here. And back in when they were, back in the day when there were five men on an engine, in that big fight at Station 99. And I think what's also pleasant, and God rest your mother, but your father and your mother got to see you rise to this great position, and God rest it, Marvin Browdy got to see you rise, because I would have loved to have seen, I don't know what John would say, he'd say, I'd be talking too much if he was still here. But...
You're talking too much.
I think that's a treat, that's a treat that you've had. But so many issues, and Zev talked about that, that Prop U, Prop O, really changed the difference, you know? And I said it yesterday about Jim Hahn, when they look back at what Jim has done, I will say it today, those who write about Los Angeles history will go down and find Cindy Misakowski's work, both as a deputy and as a councilperson, and will accent that real high, because you did it, you did the work. And we do look to Cindy all the time, and now there's nobody going to be sitting here on this side, so I'm going to look to whoever's in that first row, so you better read everything. Lastly, one memorable, many, but I remember Cindy when she was glaring me down and playing on the City Hall baseball team. And a pitcher, a great athlete, because we sometimes don't think, it's great to have that whole humanities effort. Cindy Misakowski was about that. She was a great pitcher, she put it right over the plate, and she participated. And that's another thing, too, and I'm speaking to the staff, participating with others in building coalitions, because that, as Greg said earlier, you know, how you work together. You all work together, all of a sudden, you make a good soup that's good for people. And that's truly what Cindy has done. She's made a good soup for all of us to have, to make this city a healthier place. Your fight on keeping the city together, because someone really did have to read everything. I could go out and talk about I love LA, but you read it absolutely all the time to make sure that the right interests were taken for the city. God bless Cindy Misakowski for what that you stand for, and may you enjoy your life and whatever you choose to do, and go out and see the world, and enjoy, and make Doug happy, make him say, go down and do something to help the city when he gets there to do that. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Our next speaker is Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cindy and Doug, I had no idea, until I watched that video, that you guys were actually the James Carville and Mary Madeline of West LA. Who knew? Who knew? But as you both know, I live pretty close to you. I mean, I live right on the CD-5, CD-11 border, you guys live right on the border, and just as you spend an awful lot of time in the 5th District, I spend a lot of time in the 11th District. And I've been really amazed and impressed at the great things I've seen over the past couple of years in your district. I mean, I really, really live there. My kids and I go to the Country Mart on the weekends, and you know, we get to talk, you and I get to talk about the things that you're doing for these great little nooks and crannies of your district that most people don't know about, but are just so special. And I wanted to just tell a little story today about that type of an issue and relate it back to when I first really got to know both of you. You hosted an event at my neighbor's house, Steve and Kathy's house, just down the street from me. And one thing that you and I spoke about that night was an ongoing issue you had in your district at the time, which were the controversial old trees at Barrington Court. And you had people just all heated and wired up and emotional and ready for battle over those trees at that Barrington Court area. And it was the sort of issue where councilmembers often engage in, you know, whether it's horse trading or, you know, really make poor decisions. And you stuck to your guns. You stuck to your guns on what should happen for that area, what should happen to those trees. I guess one or two of the trees are still there, and it was controversial, people were unhappy. But I was just there two days ago in that Barrington Court area. And it is beautiful, it is thriving, it is a real center of life and vitality in your district and in mine. And that is just emblematic of the sort of decision-making that you have engaged in while you've been here. You have engaged throughout your tenure in long-term decision-making. You have not ever gone for short-term advantage, which would ultimately, in the long term, disadvantage the city or your constituents. And just as Zev remarked, when he was talking about Supervisor Hahn, that he did so much of his good work after his first eight years in office. All of your good work is going to come to fruition long after your eight years in office. And I hope that there will be people around in your district who will tell each other the reason that this is a great place today is because of a courageous decision Cindy Misakowski made a decade ago. Because that's exactly what you did, Cindy, and I admire you for that. Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas.
Why don't we finish with any of the council members?
When I think of Cindy Misakowski, I think of good policy, smarts, and a voracious talent to bring people to the table. But after working with her for two years in council and on my committee, I wanted to know more. Besides a good policy discussion, what does she really like? I turned to a reliable source to get some insider information on, who is Cindy?
Cindy gave a key to her office? Yeah, I do this all the time, don't worry.
Okay, we said so.
Here's the best way to find out.
Hey, you know, let me sit in her chair. Ooh, I feel smarter just sitting here. Makes you want to read something.
You don't look any prettier.
Well, okay. Wow, look at all these things, these stacks of stuff. Security, Casa Gundo, LAX.
Ah-ha!
Hey, we found a brooch stash. These are her brooches. Check this one out.
I haven't seen her wear that one in a while.
No, she's probably saving it for last, maybe her last day or something.
Well, remember this one? She wore this the day we passed the airport plan.
And who are you supposed to be?
Cindy Misakowski.
I didn't even realize that was a brooch.
Look, look, from Glass Groundbreaking. I'm Cindy Misakowski.
You know what? Maybe she got that at LAX.
Maybe. What's in there?
I hear she's more organized than her own staff. She's like an organization freak. This file says, "The most misused words in the English language." Who keeps a file on that? Word of the day. Hey, let's check and see what her word of the day is. Master plan.
You know what her word of the day was yesterday?
What's that?
Ted.
Hey, music. Let's figure out what kind of music she likes. Jefferson Airplane, B-52s, air supply, Jet. Jet's a band?
Oh, come on, Tony, they're the hottest band right now.
Never heard of them.
"One, two, three, take care, come with me." Come on, you've heard it, I know, I know you have.
I've heard the song, "Don't quit your day job." All right. Hey, check it out. Look at this. There's a whole case of Diet Coke. And there's a couple of six-packs. And there's more. And there's more.
We knew she had a drinking problem. Now that she's off the council, she'll be able to get into one of these treatment programs to break this addiction.
Yeah, she better.
That 12-step for Diet Cokers.
Check it out, look, no! So in search of finding the real Cindy, you know, not just the master plan Cindy, but the real Cindy, this is what we found. Cindy's favorite hangout. Cindy's favorite sound. Cindy's favorite word.
Airports, 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 airports.
Airports, airports, so it's not a one-time...
But I wonder what she's really about? Well, when I get my chance to talk about Cindy, what I'm going to say, she's smart. When I was in the State Assembly, I met her at a park, she had put together millions and millions of dollars for that park, Delano Park, out in Van Nuys. But the thing is, that park was being promised for decades. She was representing that community, and just a few years, she put those millions of dollars together. She asked me with one sentence, can you help me out a little bit with the state? We need the last, I think it was like $500,000. I said, sure. After all the work that she did, I just helped put the icing on the cake, and what did she want to do? She wanted to give me all the credit.
Whenever there was a dicey situation, you had six or seven members on this side, and six or seven members voting the other way, and it looked like we were just deadlocked. It would always be Cindy Misakowski that would find a compromise, a middle ground, a way to move forward. She provides briefing papers to her staff.
What do you need staff for?
Just a minute, I'm busy.
I thought you said we had permission to be here. You said we had permission. And in our investigation, one thing was certain. Cindy, you will be missed. On a serious note, Cindy, you fill this chair with integrity and leadership. You've given so much to this great city, and I've been honored to work with you for the last two years as a councilmember and a colleague, and I'm going to consider you a friend for life. We owe a lot to you, and without your leadership, this city wouldn't be the great city that it is. You've given so much to all of us, as councilmembers and as friends. Cindy, we're going to miss you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Bernard Parks, and while he's getting ready, you can return that thing that you took from Ms. Misakowski's office, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cindy, I wanted to say thank you for all you've done. I don't know if you realize it, that when you made all the compromises on the lap dancing, it wasn't the industry that was happiest, it was Dennis Zine. Now he has something to do on the weekend, now that you, you don't have to stay so far apart. But we were pleased, and just as yesterday, being able to lean over and ask you, what's the next step in Budget and Finance? I guess I have to get your cell phone number, because we do need that information. Many people don't realize your patience. I remember you and I spent a couple of hours at Palisades on a subject called leaf blowers. And I was going to make a joke about it until I realized how serious the people were, and you said, please, don't joke about leaf blowers, just listen. And you were just so polite and smiled through the whole thing. I got in my car later and I said, we spent two hours on leaf blowers. And so, but you showed the patience, the interest in the community, and I think we see it on a daily basis, that your preparation, as I said in the video, I don't know if anybody's more prepared than you are about issues. You have an answer when you come over that's well-thought-out, and whether you agree or disagree, you've always had the balance and the class. And I always appreciated your staff, from Lisa, the first person I met, Adina, I worked with for years, and many of the other staff. You have the best staff in city government, and it's something that reflects the kind of work that you do, and it's something that the city will appreciate after you leave probably more than while you're here. And I think that's going to be the void, that all of us have to pick up that slack to be able to pick up and move forward. The number of issues you dealt with are significant, serious issues that impact citywide, not just parochial and just dealing with your district, but citywide issues. And it's been important for all of us to learn from you. And so I look forward to whatever you choose to do in your next life, I know it's going to be impacting positively on the City of L.A., not just your district, but the whole city. And so I think it's just another chapter. As I mentioned to you yesterday, we're going to use you as a poster child for why term limits is not the best way to go, because it is something that really, for someone that decided that they would choose to get rid of what they call ineffective legislators for arbitrary figure, we get rid of tremendous number of positive role models, ineffective legislators, and it's something in which the city will be the worst for. And so I just want to say thank you for all the things that you've done. The thing I've appreciated most is that we can disagree and tomorrow on the next 60 votes, we can work on the next issue. And so it was never one of those issues that came up to where it carried over from day to day. And so thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Next is Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cindy, I rise. And I don't know how you did it all those years. But I really wanted to add my bit of honor to you. And, you know, I first knew you when we were both members of the Women's Political Committee, a organization here in Los Angeles that is committed to making sure that women get elected to public office. And you were one of those women that we watched get elected from that membership, and that's something you have continued to do. You have continued to work to help raise money and to give advice and to give support to women who would also want to be elected to office. And I think that's a great compliment to you, because you can't say that about all women elected officials, but you have really been one of those, that once you got elected, you really reached around and reached your hand out to other women who also wanted to get elected. And many of us have been to your home when you opened it up for fundraising events. You and Doug were always so hospitable to that for candidates who wanted to be in public office. And I'll say that as one of the newcomers around here, four years ago, I really watched you, I learned from you, I listened from you, I felt very honored to serve on Budget and Finance with you. I sat there and just tried to absorb as much as I could from your knowledge. We served on the Commerce Committee together. And, you know, people talk a lot about the consensus that you brought forward with the airport plan, but what should never go unnoticed, no matter what happens in the future with that plan, the fact that we had a $500 million community benefits package with the modernization of LAX is unprecedented in the city, that you helped to bring together all those groups from other cities, from all the groups that felt most impacted by airport operations. You brought them to the table and actually crafted a benefits plan that they would benefit from what happened at LAX. And that's something that I watch very carefully, because you know I represent an area that also lives next to an economic engine. But we have to, as we move forward in the city, find ways to make sure that people who just live geographically next to one of our huge entities, that we make sure that they get some benefits and not just negative effects. And that was really amazing to watch you do that. And I know Tom and I, you know, we try to pay attention. We try to read all our, we try to do our homework, but every once in a while, we get distracted over here. And when we realize that the vote is going to be taken, and, you know, we might not exactly be paying attention, we just turn and say, how's Cindy going to vote? And that never has steered us wrong, and we'll miss that. You really were the guiding wisdom on the City Council. We will truly miss you and what you've been able to offer to the City of Los Angeles. Congratulations and have a great life.
Just have a couple more, but I've been informed that Larry Calamine is here and would like to make a presentation from LaFco. Mr. Calamine.
Hi. Hi.
Hi, there.
Cindy, it's a privilege and a pleasure for me to be here on behalf of the Local Agency of Information and Commission, and acknowledge all the fine work you've done for that commission. You and I have known each other 30 years. And it's only during the last four years that we've worked closely on these issues of local government. And you were appointed to the LaFco Commission in 2001, and as a LaFco Commission, you had brought to that commission the benefit of your good judgment, your common sense, your many years of experience in local municipal government, and finally, your voice of reason. Never, ever in 30 years have ever heard you raise your voice. During the last four years, you have weighed in on hundreds of city and district annexations, proposed city incorporation, numerous other government boundary issues, and who can ever forget secession? That application to break up the City of L.A. into three separate cities. That subject alone, you sat in on more than 100 commission meetings. We appreciate that. Your fellow commissioners have asked that I extend to you their good wishes and success for whatever future endeavors you want to take, and let you also know that you'll be sorely missed on the commission. You were truly an excellent commissioner. And on behalf of the LaFco Commission, we wanted to present something which doesn't hang on a wall, but rather, a little memento of your years of service.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Picas, would you like to say a couple things?
Cindy, it's an unexpected pleasure to get to say a word to you today, and I will keep it very brief. When you worked for Councilman Browdy, he and I shared adjoining districts and joining offices as well. And particularly in the district, we knew a lot of the same organizations, worked with a lot of the same people. And the most amazing thing to me was that some of those folks that I had a very difficult time getting along with, you not only got along with them beautifully, but they loved you! So I think that reflects so positively on you as an aide to a councilmember and as a councilmember, that you could cover the ground and get along with anybody at all times. And just let me add, I like these days to refer to myself with tongue-in-cheek. I say, I am the San Fernando Valley's premier pro bono consultant. So if you need any advice on life after council, I'll be happy to tell you how to make it work for you. All the best.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Picas. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Vioragosa.
I didn't think I was coming today, and then I found out that today we were honoring you, and I had to be among my colleagues on the council to join in the chorus. You know, when you serve in public life, as I have in two bodies now, the State Assembly, an institution that I love and respect, and now the council, another institution that I have a great deal of affection for and respect very much. You remember those people who have honored that institution, the people who stand above just being an individual elected official, but in many ways, personify why those institutions are so important in our democratic life. And when, like the rest of my colleagues, they're in every body, you know, in the legislature and both the Assembly and the Senate, here on the council, on the Board of Supervisors, there's always one or two people that stand out. They're people you look to, you've, over the years, developed a respect for their intellect, for their judgment, for their deliberation, and you look to them. their deliberation, and you look to them. You know, where are they on this issue? And when I think about someone on this council in the last two years who's been that kind of individual, you stand out above the rest. You are a woman of great intellect, of impeccable preparation. You read everything that goes by you, and not just the material which we all read. But you go way and above and beyond that, and that's special. But I think what, for me, is particularly significant about your tenure here is that you've really showed people in a term limited era, the era of the short benefit. You know, we're all looking for what's next. And I'm not speaking about this, these individuals here, but in the term limited era, that's what people do. You kind of look beyond that, and you do it in a way that I think demonstrates your integrity and your commitment to principle. And we can all learn from that. Time and again, you've stood up, sometimes alone, and spoken to the fact that if we're to go down the road that we're all going, it's not very responsible for us to do that. And you do that again and again, sometimes, as I said, all alone, in a way that requires a great deal of courage, and I think a good example for the rest of us. So, we're gonna miss you, but something tells me you're gonna be involved in civic life, and who knows, you may run for something again. But we all can learn from your experience here, both as a staffer and as a colleague. And I'm looking forward to being able to count on you in the coming years to help as well. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vieragosa. Cindy, our gain here in the city was the Catholic Church's loss. I think the fact that you didn't become a nun, we would have an Order of Sisters right now that had their own airport and would have had a rec center unrivaled in the entire world, and who knows what would have happened? Maybe women would be ordained right now. But it was amazing to have you as part of the city. I actually, the first time I ever voted for a city council member was for you. I grew up in Encino. My parents moved my senior year of high school to the West Side, and I was not living there, but I was living abroad, but I got my ballot voted by mail for Cindy Misakowski in that first election. You have represented that area and this entire city in an amazing way. It's great to have Doug here. Thanks for getting dressed up, as always, Doug. It's great to see you. But more than anything, thank you for sharing Cindy with us, because you truly did make immense sacrifices, as any partner, any spouse does, to allow somebody to serve the public. And perhaps you made the greatest sacrifice of all. And I just wanted to add my voice, Cindy, to thank you for the friendship in these past few years. There's not a lot of mentoring that goes on in politics these days, because it's so quick. People come and go before you can find mentors and mentees. And I really count you as one of a very, very small group of people who still look to mentor and to carry on the tradition, just as you learned from others, that public service is noble and public service is good. There's so many hidden things that you have your fingerprints on here that haven't been mentioned. The first motion for a neighborhood land trust, the way that you and Doug personally helped on Proposition O, the way that you, behind the scenes, when we were faced with the city splitting apart, did some pretty remarkable things that never made headlines to make sure that we had as strong a campaign as possible. And I'll miss the lunches that I hope we might be able to continue in one form or another that you and Alex and I were able to have over the years. I think the word that comes to mind most when I think about you is unimpeachable, unimpeachable. And you talk to anybody, whether they were your worst opponent or your closest friend, it was impossible to impeach your integrity. And what Tom said about staff, I think, was so right. Sometimes folks would joke that if it was written by a staff member, Cindy knew that it was right. But what that said was that you actually took the responsibility of all the folks that are in this room and the city family that's probably listening right now, that their work was just as noble as the work around here, that it was just as important. In fact, it was probably better researched, better thought out, and that we should really read each one of those words, because it wasn't just words on paper. It represented the hard work of many people in this city. You demanded excellence from yourself and from others, and I think you achieved it. And just in closing, you have one of the strongest compasses I've ever come in contact with. Your moral center, your ethical center is as strong, and the magnetism of your style is just as strong as well, the way that you made your imprint around here. And it is something that I will certainly, certainly miss, as I know we all will. So, with that, we'd love to hear from you as well. Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. I have, there's a couple of community members, I think, that just are motioning to...
Well, I'm hoping that, one, we do have an event outside, so I'm happy to share and talk with everyone. And I want to thank Jan Perry and Alex for sponsoring that, where we're gonna be on the steps.
Okay, well, let yourself be honored. One last time.
All right, no, let me, let me, so you can do this outside. It really is an amazing place, and I'm just as thrilled to see the staff members who are around, because as many of you know, and you've probably heard me say it, I've spent eight years here as a council member, but in my heart, I'm still a staffer. So, when you see that support, or you see me trying to clarify, that's what your staff is doing when they're tapping on your shoulder and saying, "No, wait, this is the way to go." I've never lost that, I've never lost love of that. So, I love the people who are around this building, because public service isn't just getting elected. Public service is the people who decided to work for the city and are smart and make it happen. An awful lot of times, people, council elected officials say, "But the staff is saying no." And I said, "Listen closely. They're saying, 'No, you can't do it that way,' but work with them and ask them how you can do it, and they will come up with ideas, and they will show you the way." And they are full of ideas of just trying and being given the opportunity. And part of the equanimity, or whatever you want to ascribe to me, comes from knowing that this city is blessed with an incredible workforce, you know, not only in the public safety field, but in the administrative field. And I know that the staff around knows that I know that, and that's often why they will come to me and say, "Cindy, you help explain it, you help express it," because you maybe have a little bit of a knack for that, but it comes from working with them for so long. I can't go on much longer without saying a very, very special thank you to this guy here, who you all know, Doug Ring. And those of us who have partners around this room know how particularly in elected life, there is a really large toll in that partnership, and it takes an incredibly strong person to stand beside us and stand with us. But I don't think, how many of you know how much Doug gave up for me to stand here today? I think it was unbeknownst to both of us that he was, what he was going to give up. I mean, he literally gave up his life, his career, profession, that he was at the top of. People have talked about me being in the prime. Doug was one of the top legislative lobbyist advocates, attorney in this field, rivaling with the best of them, and you know who the best of them are around this chamber now. You haven't had the experience to work with him, because he stepped aside and said, "I will give that up," so Cindy could be in this office. I don't know that he knew it was gonna be that dramatic. I didn't know it was gonna be that dramatic, but that he did and stayed with me and stood through all this. And then, as Jack indicated, we were the Madeleine in Carville. I don't know if Rick remembers, Rick Orloff in the Daily News, the day or the weekend we did get married, he wrote a little quip in the Daily News about, like in the Middle Ages and the Hundred Year Wars, when two warring medieval families would offer up the son and daughter in the truce and settlement. So, too, the son and daughter of the anti-development and the pro-development world came together. And it's been an exciting, exciting interaction. He is obviously opinionated, and you've all seen that and heard that and felt that. He's got an incredible sense of humor. But I have also learned from him immeasurably, because the truth is, for anybody around here who is ever looking to be an advocate for something or have the cause that you care about, the most you're gonna learn, and the most effectively that you're gonna learn, is to talk and listen closely to those who oppose you, because you're gonna hear kernels there of things that maybe you can agree on, and kernels in which you can work together. But knowing best those who don't agree with you is gonna serve you best in the long run. And again, my staff who's sitting here, and Kristin Monte was the narrator of the staff show and did a great job, and the staff in the video was really tremendous, and I know that Lisa and Adina worked on it as well, and I think everyone contributed. I do have a great staff. I think I was a hard person when I hired staff, because I knew what I had been, what I wanted, and I can say it was matched immeasurably by the staff. And I just like to have my staff, both current and former staff, stand, because they are... They are terrific, and they are balanced, and I've got, I mean, I've got folks in this council chamber who've said to me, "You know, that staff of yours, they've been a little too tough, or they've been a little too pushy, or they've been a little too hard." But they are doing it with a passion, what they believe in, and knowing that I've said to them, I don't have to give them marching orders. I value their intelligence, their knowledge, and what they're doing, and it's the right thing. I'm so grateful to see the members of the community who are here. It's been a long, long run, nearly 30 years that I started with Marvin, and some of the community members who I started with back then are here today. I was lucky enough to have an event a week ago at the Skirball, and a woman who introduced me to City Hall and to politics in 1971 was able to be there. So, longevity does count for a lot, but it doesn't only count for a lot just being in elected office here and talking about short timers. There is life in all levels of being involved in this great city and what we do, and that's why I'm not going away. I will be here after respite and after Doug has said, "Okay, you know, enough with you. Get back and find something to do." I hope I will be able to come back here and do other good things with you. I would just say that it's been an incredible council membership that I've had the good fortune to serve with, particularly these last eight years, and I include Mike Hernandez in that as a council colleague. You are all, obviously, we all know what we go through in the test to get here through that elected life, but then, once here, without a doubt, I can say this group of people understands each other, comes from different perspectives, but it's easy to be friends with a group of people who are elected here today, because I think that sense of importance of the city, that sense of importance of listening to each other as colleagues is palpable. And that wasn't always the case. I've served through my time with Marvin, with over 60 people who've sat in these seats as council members, and this group is by far one of the most enjoyable. It makes it fun for me to come to work, even if it is sitting here for long, long hours and long, long meetings. And I think that's about all I have to say, other than just thank you all for being a very, very, very special part of my life. And there was one person who said to me, I hope it's not quite taken the way he meant it, but he said to me, "Cindy, thank you for giving the better part of your life to the city of Los Angeles, and it's because of the people like you, who I've had a joy in having that happen." Thank you.
Ms. Misakowski. We have one last thing. We're gonna announce, of course, there's a reception at the Spring Street forecourt, but from our more recent stars that have been in the Mickey Mouse Club, like Britney Spears, we have one of the original members, Sheri Adams, who actually works for your colleague, Dennis Zine, who's gonna lead us in a little song to the melody, the tune of the Mickey Mouse Club theme about Cindy Misakowski. And my fingerprints are not on it, for the record. Please welcome Sheri Adams, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, you ready? One, two, three. Who's the chair of public safety protecting you and I? Who could stop her own farewell if council rules didn't comply? Misakowski, 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 Misakowski. Police deployment numbers must be high, 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 high. Let Doug Ring and let's all sing to wish Cindy goodbye. Everybody who has brooches bright enough to make you shield your eyes. Who's the poet Pro Tempres who ever sat up high? Misakowski, 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 Misakowski. No one knows procedure more than she, 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 she. Let's all sing of the peubling and wish Cindy goodbye. Slow. M-I-S...
Is she really...
Is she really going away? Es mujer muy fría. Everybody!
Sheri Adams, ladies and gentlemen.
As we conclude, I know there's a lot of staff members and members of the community who also want to be part of a tribute. I think it's Cindy's request that we conduct that at the reception outside. So, thank you very much, and we'll see y'all at the reception.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
The desk is clear, and the only things are announcements and motions adjournment.
Okay, any announcements, colleagues? No announcements. We want to also say goodbye to Councilmember Vieragosa for his last day in city council. We wish him well on his next endeavor. And do we have adjourning motions, colleagues? Is there anybody with an adjourning motion? Ms. Hahn has one? Please, can I? Oh, you're just waving goodbye. No adjourning motions, then? All right. Madam Clerk, you'll call the roll?
Cardinals Garcetti, Gruhan, Laban, Chalado, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Ray Smith, Vieragosa, Weiss, Stein, Padilla.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.